Open the meeting of January 28th. We've all rise for the -- 29th, excuse me, rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, in whose law we're liberated and justice is strong.
Okay. Excuse me, Spanish translation? Do we have someone?
We have Alma Flores translating for us. Alma, would you please introduce yourself?
Buenas noches, mi nombre es Alma Flores, y si necesita los servicios de un intérprete estaré sentada en la parte de atrás del salón.
Gracias. There's a message on the board about the -- for hearing impaired people. We have no announcements of closed session action right now. Acceptance of donations.
Move to approve with appreciation.
Second? Harder and Parker, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Here you go. Five zero, it passes. We're on to introductions, proclamations, presentations, and recognitions.
Well, we do have two presentations tonight. First, parent involvement is highly important to the success of our students and our schools. Our successful programs that we celebrate, one of our successful programs that we celebrate and that we've talked about at recent meetings is Padres Adelante, a leadership program for Spanish-speaking parents. I hear great things about the work that the parents are doing in the Padres Adelantes ELAC meetings. ELAC stands for English Language Advisory Committee, and we have the D-LAC when, from the different sites, they come together in the District English Language Advisory Committee. With us this evening is Esteban Ortiz, who will provide an overview of the program. And as Esteban has spoken to us before, would you please come up to the microphone and tell the board about Padres Adelante?
Good evening, everyone. Well, I thought I was going to be like at 7:30 or something like that, but moving ahead. Okay, well, thanks for having me here tonight. And go ahead and start it with the PowerPoint presentation. And about Padres Adelante, and again, that was the ELAC as well, like Mr. Sarves said, and is the English Learners Advisory Committee for the schools, Cesar Chavez. Padres Adelante is a parent component of Santa Barbara Enlace. Enlace means engaging Latino communities in education and the pathways programs from that is funneled, all the funds and all the coordinating is funnelled through UCSB. And it's an intensive program for Spanish-speaking parents, Cesar Chavez's school. It basically has, the purpose is to bring parents to the school, get engaged in the education of their children. It promotes articulation between, you know, the segments which are elementary school and moving on to the different phases of their education. The Parent-School Partnership Curriculum, which is put on by MALDEF and which, you know, some of our parents have gone through that and will have the opportunity of continuing with the group's effort in years to follow after UCSB coordinating has run its course. But basically, it's a 16-meeting or 16-session curriculum that goes through all these things that you see there. And the purpose of that, it's parent participation, as I said before. It places parents in a position of power, you know, just being able to handle the problems that their children may face in the school, places them in a position of power to know what the school structure, district's structure is so that they can navigate the system as well, identifies issues and struggles that are current in their everyday life. And we also, you know, it's, there's a leadership component as well that, you know, basically gives them the tools to try to own their struggles and to be able to take it forward and try to speak with some official at the school or elsewhere as they need it. It also, its purpose is to keep other parents informed and involved. Obviously, you know, the one, you know, the $64 million question is, you know, how do you get parents involved? And as such, we see that participation of parents in schools programs, you know, it's very rare. So the parents that do come into our meetings, they do a great job of spreading the word as far as what we discuss during the meetings. So that's another way of keeping parents involved. Things that we look at under the curriculum that we follow are the rights to review a child's record, and they learn about that. They can go to the school office and ask for the CUME file, review it, and discuss any problems or things that they might need clarification on. They review the schools on record. They ask questions, appeal decisions which affect their children, and basically, they are given the tools and hopefully the leadership skills to demand better results. They also look at the school responsibilities and basically, you know, making sure, and this is part of the ELAC component also, basically making sure that the school administration is fair for everyone there, provide children, make sure that the school provides an environment that is conducive to learning, they have appropriate setting, enough classes, class materials, excuse me. And one of the topics that we discussed on January 15th is basically violence in the school. So that's another component that we, another thing that we touch upon in the meetings as well. And basically, it facilitates parent engagement in the school. It also discusses, we discuss also parents' responsibilities. You know, we ask, and we, and I mean myself as well, we learn about our rights, we learn about the system, the educational system. We try to let everyone know and learn the steps that we need to follow. If we have a complaint, we had Ms. Swawsky there at the meeting last time, and she explained to us about the Williams complaint form and basically how to go about it. So that's one of the things that we do. We have speakers and members of the community. So again, notice that we ask them to catch fire and to get involved. Expectations of the program is basically increase self-confidence, create stronger relationship with school personnel, officials, and obviously with the child because once they know what they can expect from the school, they then can ask the questions and know what is expected of the child in school. And again, since the major, one of the major purposes of the program is to get parent involvement in the school, knowing the curriculum, knowing the things that they need to know in order to advance their children's education, and that's one thing that they need to do. And in general, just better the odds for the success of not only their children, but as, again, as an advisory committee, we basically ask them to also look out for the interest of all the community in the school. Information that you would like to, if you want more information about the program, basically you can send me an email if you'd like. I have this PowerPoint presentation that we can forward to you. And I'd like to present first, Graciela Fernandez. She is the coordinating person from UCSB, and she does a great job for us. She helps us out with getting speakers to come to the school. We also commend Ms. Eva Nayar for the support of, you know, for having Padres Adelante there at the school, providing us with a place to meet and other goodies. And I have a group of parents here that is representative of ELAC and Padres Adelante. This is only a small portion of them. We have an open door policy, and here they are, they're all in the back row. If you'd like to, si pueden pararse, por favor? Gracias. So this is basically an overview of what the program looks like in paper. We invite you to come to any of our meetings. You are welcome to talk to us, talk to Ms. Nayar, to see what the next meeting agenda and all that is, and you will be welcome to sit in or maybe even be a speaker for us. Do you have any questions? Thank you very much. Yes?
Just a comment. I just want to thank you, Mr. Ortiz, for your leadership as a parent with Padres Adelantes and with D-LAC.
Thank you.
We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, and thank you for coming today and to present this.
You're very welcome. And one thing that I wanted to touch upon also is basically to, that the purpose of the program is to increase the leadership skills of the parents involved. And we see them all here, and I know that some of them will be helping a lot next year when their opportunity comes. And, you know, I guess that's basically one of the reasons why I'm up here, that, you know, through the program I've become more confident in doing this kind of thing. Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Well, we do have one other presentation tonight. Marlene King, president of Santa Barbara Downtown Rotary Club, is with us with a special presentation in support of Santa Barbara Junior High's music and arts program. Marlene, would you please come up to the podium? And as you're coming up to tell us what this is about and how it came about, let's have John Beckio and John Houchen as well come up.
Thanks, Brian. Thank you for having me, first of all. It's wonderful to be here, and I applaud that program. I think there's nothing more important than parents engaging with their children, so I salute you for doing that because today people are so busy, they get so involved in things, and there's, obviously, sometimes when you have a language barrier, it's very difficult. So the more you know about what's going on with the children, power isn't, you know, knowledge is power, I should say, so that's wonderful. That's really awesome that you do that, and I hope that it does grow and people get more confident and ask more questions. And it's not so much to challenge a school, but hopefully it's also to help your children be better students and then become better leaders. So that's wonderful. And that's kind of what the Rotary Club does. The Rotary Club, if you're not aware, we're all over the world. This particular Rotary Club that I represent, that I'm the president of, just celebrated its 90th anniversary, we're 90 years old. We're the largest Rotary Club on the central coast and the oldest on the central coast. And we do lots of things in the community and around the world. And one of the most important things that we do in the community is we focus on children, giving children opportunities in every capacity. In this particular program, what I'm going to talk about in the presentation, and it's going to be very brief, but to give you some background, is we have 160 members, Rotarians, that come to our club, and we work on, what Rotary Clubs are all about is we work on projects around the world. We provide clean water in India, we provide medicine, we were almost finished with eradicating polio around the world. So we work on lots of projects, but we also work on a lot of things in the community. And one of the things very near and dear to us are students in schools. And we happen to have this last fall, a festival of art, music and art. And this is a project that takes all of the Rotarians working very hard, putting on this program, this one, this past year happened to be in the Sunken Gardens Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. And the whole purpose of this is to raise money for students. And this came about in a very short period of time this past year, so next year we expect it to be even better. We've got a different project lined up. But I talked to Dr. Sarves and asked him, we want to target a school, one school, to make a difference, and we want it to be a school where there's children that are interested in music and art and may not necessarily have the opportunity to engage in music and art. Because as we know, not all students are necessarily academically inclined. They're bright, but sometimes they have other talents within them they may not even know or discover because they don't have the opportunity. They don't have instruments, or they don't, they're not in an art program. And what we wanted to do is hopefully provide the opportunity for students in one particular school to get more involved in arts, music, and in art. So our focus was an art and music festival and raise money for that. And we had lots of individuals in the community, lots of banks, and the auto dealership Mercedes-Benz, a lot of people sponsored the event, and all the Rotarians worked the event. And so we came up with a nice chunk of changes here for like a three months planning it and then three days of working it. So we have a check that we'd like to present to John Beckio. I know, I knew his name, but I just wanted to pronounce it right. Beckio. And Mr. Houchen, is it Dave?
John.
John. John Houchen. And it's for $27,000, and it's to buy new instruments and, for the music program, and also digital cameras for a new class that you're going to have, right? For digital art. You can maybe even say a word, but let me present the check. It's a big one, but... The wonderful thing about this is it, it goes right to buying things. There's no middleman. It doesn't get lost in the system. We write checks right to the organizations to buy these things, so we know where the money's going, and it's wonderful. And we're going to be doing it again this fall, actually at the Marjorie Luke Theater, so it'll be near and dear to everyone there. So thank you very much for having me. It's really a pleasure to do this. Thank you.
Excellent.
I just, I wanted to again thank the Rotary. I did, I saw Brian Tangway in our purchasing department. I told him I'd be calling him real soon about purchases. But we really appreciate this. One of John Houchen's, his vision for the art program really is to try to align better with the academies at the high school. And so in looking at an advanced digital arts class, there's obviously, what comes along with that is the purchase of hardware and software, and so some of the funds will go to doing that. And then there, the music teacher, Doug Troop, put together a list of about $20,000 worth of new music instruments, which is much needed at our school. They are very old, so, and the repair bill on them each year is quite expensive. So this is much needed at our school, and we really appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Say, John, you want to hand that check off to Eric Smith so that it gets into the bank tomorrow morning? Thank you. And that's it for presentations tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. What wonderful presentations. A lot of help for children. Thank you. Superintendent's report?
Well, I do have some items to report on. We're in the middle of our open enrollment period, as you know, for elementary schools and at the high school level. Dos Pueblos is holding an open house tonight just for that purpose, and the other secondary schools will hold open houses in February. Flyers to the secondary open houses are available in the back of the room, and I think you may have that in front of you, board members. Last Friday, a 15,000-volt power line went down next to Washington Elementary School. My compliments, though, to elementary, to the elementary school. Damien Barnett and the staff did particularly well at the school. They worked closely with the fire department, they sheltered in place and operated without power for several hours. No injuries. We talk about ways to engage students and help them avoid the lure of gangs. We also talk about how adults on campus are a powerful force in making a difference in the lives of our students. Well, a Santa Barbara International Film Festival documentary captured that connection in a film that aired on Sunday and is airing again tonight at 9:30. So if we rush through our business, we can go make The Dawn Riders, a 35-minute documentary about Santa Barbara High School's first lowrider bicycle club. You should see these bikes, they're pretty cool. It demonstrates how two club co-advisors work with students at risk, teaching skills and encouraging academic achievement. And if possible, we hope to bring these students to a future board meeting. We continue to build the wellness section of our webpage. Most recently, we added ideas for healthy fundraising alternatives. You know, that's an important one because we used to get bake sales, bake sales, bake sales, and candy sales. We also have a list of foods and beverages that comply with our wellness policy. We have healthy classroom celebrations, which is a list of suggestions about how to have healthy celebrations and alternatives to food as a reward. So those are all on the district website. On February 8th, the Tri-County Gate Council Teacher Recognition Awards will take place at an awards luncheon, and this year there will be four recipients from our districts. They are Jody Miles from Adams Elementary School, Judy Edmondson from Washington Elementary, Carolyn Callahan from Santa Barbara Junior High, and Brianna Lox from Santa Barbara Junior High. Our districts are joint sponsors with the League of Women Voters on a February 20 noon forum on closing the achievement gap, so we'll provide you more information on that. And coming up ahead, in the days ahead, Santa Barbara Junior High School, excuse me, I think that's an error, Santa Barbara High School will be visited, oh, tomorrow morning, the junior high school will be visited by the C-SPAN Campaign 2008 bus. So the big bus pulls up, it's a mobile multimedia demonstration center and television production unit. The bus will also be at Santa Barbara High School on Thursday. The bus was designed to engage and excite voters about the 2008 presidential campaign, and we're pleased to have this opportunity to have the C-SPAN bus come to a couple of our schools. Galita Valley, and I didn't even know about the junior high tomorrow, so John Beckio, I think my hat's probably off to Barbie Chiani for arranging that. Galita Valley Junior High School is taking sign-ups this Thursday for American Sign Language. Students will have the chance to meet every Thursday morning and learn how to sign. Dos Pueblos High School's Ealing's Aquatic Center will hold the unveiling of a new tile wall next Tuesday at 2:30. So that's at Dos Pueblos, at the pool, Ealing's Aquatic Center, Tuesday at 2:30. And finally, Santa Barbara Junior High will hold its 75th anniversary on March 8th, and coincidentally, San Marcos High School on that same day will be celebrating its 50th anniversary. So we're looking forward to both of those events. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Public comment? We don't seem to have any, do we? Then the consent agenda.
Move to approve?
I'd like to pull E3.
Do I hear a second?
My second, Mrs. Harder, motion, land of E3.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nope. Five zero for approving consent agenda. We'll get to that item later in the meeting. We'll come back to it. Action agenda, E1, approval of submission of grant application for matching funds for a career technical education kitchen at Santa Barbara High School.
Well, this is an exciting opportunity for us, and Dave Hatjonk, our Director of Facilities and Operations, will make a presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Sarves. Board members, the career technical education funds available with the state is part of the latest bond, state bond issue, Prop. 55. As you're aware, Dos Pueblos High School Engineering Academy applied for and was successful in obtaining a grant application. And just for your information, that application is due to go to the State Allocation Board in March. It was going to be February, they postponed it in March because their secondary paperwork form was a little bit confusing, and every district that applied received a four-day notice to redo the paperwork on one form, including us. We've sent that in, and so they're being flooded with all the paperwork at one time, and they couldn't get it done for the February agenda. Round two of this application is due in Sacramento on February 1st. As you're aware, as part of the renovation of the main production kitchen at Santa Barbara High School, we included a vocational kitchen at that site. As a career technical education facility, we thought it prudent to go ahead and apply for the funds. What this would do would negate or lessen the funds required by the district to construct this facility, so we basically have set aside developer fees in the future to pay for this project, and these matching funds would lessen the impact on that developer fee pot of money. We contacted County Office of Education and City College. Cheryl Malone at County Office of Education, Coordinator for ROP Programs, and Mark Caprito, president of, or president, principal, I promoted him, principal at Santa Barbara High School, were instrumental in putting this document together, and I want to thank both of them publicly for all of their time and effort. What you have before you is a draft. There were a few minor modifications for titles of different people and minor adjustments of square footage and dollar amounts, but basically, we're taking the value of the career technical education portion of that project and asking the state to give us 50% of the money.
Any questions?
No, no questions. It was actually a nice explanation, but on page 12 of 35, under element six, section A, the paragraph starting with the words "grant funds," there's a typo, it says "grand funds." I just don't think you want to send in the application with a typo.
We can change that. Thank you.
It was actually great to see this, too, because, I mean, we know that it's been coming, but it's so well articulated in this grant application package that it's, I know that it's coming one way or the other, so I'm really excited about it. It was good to see. So I'd like to make a motion to approve the submission of grant application for matching funds for a career technical education kitchen at Santa Barbara High School.
And I'll second.
We're jumping at the chance to second it.
Go for it. Santa Barbara High, second it.
I'll second it.
And I just want to say, it's a terrific advisory committee, and I really appreciate all of these community members, you know, coming together around this particular project.
It was exciting, and we want to give thanks to the people at Dos Pueblos High School for giving us a good template to work with.
Okay. That was Parker Cordero. And all those in favor?
Aye.
Did you want more discussion? I'm sorry, I didn't realize you wanted to say something. Excuse me. We'll, I'll hold that back.
I just rushed to be enthusiastic about it. I'm very enthusiastic about it, too, but I'm worried about it. And I'm worried about it for a number of reasons, but the biggest one is that it... Well, I guess there are two related reasons. One is that it's, as I read what's been written, this is old-fashioned vocational education with a new name, career technical education. And career technical education differs from old-fashioned vocational education in that it trains or educates kids for careers and college, not careers, not a career or college. And I don't see the strong, I don't see much of any college component in this at all. And that raises the fear that this will become a duplication of old-fashioned vocab tracking. And that was an educationally and morally bankrupt program some decades ago. And the contemporary paradigm for career technical education is meant to replace that, for their kids for college or careers, pardon, and careers and college. The other part that's very closely related is, I don't know where, I read it with care. I signed on to the California Employment Department's website, and I don't get the same rosy picture about job prospects that the... same rosy picture about job prospects that the proposal portrays. In fact, on their listing of occupational employment projections, there's a whole list of the food service occupations. And for, this is for Santa Barbara, Santa Maria, Delena Metropolitan Area. And they're looking at a total of 199 jobs of all kinds, new jobs, 21 food supervisors, four chefs and head cooks, lots of fast food people, food preparation workers, a lot of them, restaurant cooks, I can't find that, oh, here it is, 18 restaurant cooks. This is the average annual job opening. And then I look over in the next column, and I see the median hourly wage. And chefs and head cooks do pretty well, $19 an hour. That involves post-secondary training and so on. Restaurant cooks, $10.82 an hour. They range from $8.10 to $10.00 up to that 12, which is troublesome because of the idea of career technical education as one of preparing for 21st century jobs and salaries. Then I look at the fastest-growing occupations, Santa Barbara, Santa Maria, Metropolitan Area. And this lists 35 or 40 of the fastest-growing occupations and the median salaries. Network systems and data communications analysts at $26.87 an hour, from the period 2014 to 2014, 53.6% growth. These numbers will go down to quite low growth, and food service is not on the list here. So I worry about that. And what I would like to see, see us coming forth with, going forward with, is an application that has a very strong academic component. And I'm troubled by the food service. And again, this is a little bit like something last week, but a bit of opportunism in this. We want to build this kitchen, and here's some money. And I would like to see this thing driven by academic educational considerations more than we want to get some available money to do what we already plan to do. Thank you, Ms. Turnbull.
I have a question. It's, I guess I would be interested to look at the stats to see if there's, I mean, I had it and I didn't pull it out, if there's any information about the hospitality industry, because this program is geared not just toward restaurants, but also, you know, the hotel and hospitality industry.
Well, it's under hospitality and tourism industries. I got, you know, these numbers aren't to that.
Okay.
But speaking of that, I did look up the career technical education standards that are cited in the proposal. You cite the pathway standards, you don't cite the foundational standards. The foundational standards are different. They involve the basic academic, science, mathematics, language, English training that prepares for the pathways. And when you read them, it's like reading California's content standards, and that's no accident. The board made a very big point of it when they adopted these standards, that these career technical standards are aligned with and meshed with California's content standards. And again, I, that's right, my open comment, I don't see the academic component in this at all. And I don't see academics on the advisory committee.
May we hear from staff?
Yes, yeah, I think we, Paul.
Well, you're right, Dr. Noel, about the CTE component not having a heavy academic flavor to it, because it's not exclusionary of the academic program on a four-year program. So any particular student enrolling in this particular academy would also have to meet graduation requirements, state requirements, A through G requirements. And part of the A through G requirements actually show that CTE is recognized. So all of that's actually built in. It's not to the exclusion of.
I just didn't see it in here.
That's right. This is, this is a microcosm of the...
Is that what you're saying?
Correct. This is a microcosm of the entire four-year plan.
I think that connection needs to be made clear before this goes forward. My reading of what's, of the CDE is that they're looking for the integration, the connection, the languages, everything they write talks about integration, cause curriculum integration.
Well, if you would grant approval of this draft, I will get with Mr. Turnbull in the morning, and we will attempt to modify the application the best we can tomorrow morning. We do need to send it off to Sacramento overnight to School Facilities Consultants so they can deliver it before the deadline. You're absolutely right, Dr. Noel, and this is an opportunistic grant. We already planned on doing this project, and we have the availability of gaining some matching funds. But also, I want to say that in the conception phase of this, both the Nutrition Services Department, Santa Barbara High School, myself, City College, and ROP have all been involved and all got excited about a program that would not only provide the basic CTE skills, but would be a pathway to the culinary arts program at City College, and would encompass everything with the dining experience, where students would not only be competent in the kitchen, but they would be nutrition standards, designing the menu, going out and actually doing the shopping, setting the arena for the presentation of their dining experience as far as the ambiance. Everything would be their responsibility, including tablecloths and the presentation. And so it was kind of an opportunity to placate the school as for their inconvenience of having a main production kitchen at their site, providing another teaching station and an exciting opportunity from facilities end to see something like this pulled together in a short period of time.
I, I'm very enthusiastic, but don't misunderstand me. I'd like to get funded. When I retire from being retired, I'm heading off to the Cordon Bleu School in Paris. I'm big on this. I love it. But it would, I think, I think some attention to the integration of the academics into, and seamlessly into the career technical would strengthen it enormously. And I would ask, Craig Price isn't here, but Michael is here, on the joint, on the school-community violence prevention program you're applying for, I read there is a supplement, not supplant, rule. And if that applies to this, you've got a real problem with that rationale you just gave. You understand what I'm saying?
I understand what you're saying. But then again, when time came for this project to go out to bid, there may not be enough money to do the whole project. And if there were not enough money to do the whole project, then we need to come back to the board and say, what are we cutting out of the design? And that very well may be the CTE portion of this project.
Well, all I'm saying is, two things, you know, the integration, but the other one, I think you need to check the supplement, not supplant, rule, because you, what you're saying, we're going to take state funds to supplant local funds to build something we were going to build anyway.
Well, I can't say we're going to...
If there's a supplement, not supplant, rule, they'll shoot you down on that all by...
I can't say we're going to build it anyway, because the board has not approved that.
Ms. Parker?
I just wanted to say that, a couple of things. One is that it's, I think it's a little misleading to say that it's opportunistic to go for this money, because we had a kitchen that needed, that is under construction. What is true is that we really wanted to put in a career technical program there. And in that sense, yes, this is a wonderful opportunity to try to match funds for it from the state, and that's something that the high school had planned for.
And those teaching stations were not going to be built...
Yes.
...without some other source.
So you're giving him the...
No, no, no. I'm, I'm...
No, no, you're contributing. I'm saying something nice.
Thank you. But no, I'm segueing back to previous conversations about the kitchen, was that those were the pieces that were going to be lopped off from the kitchen plans.
This, but part of making sure that about supplements are planned, okay, would be exactly what you're talking about. You can develop that in a way that it comes through that way, that we sort of...
The other thing that I wanted to say was that I'm, you know, it's been a month or so, maybe even longer than that, since we've even taken a look at that DP grant. And I don't remember, in the DP Engineering Academy grant, any references to any other academics besides engineering and science. It was in there in terms of like English and...
Yeah, it's in there in terms of the standards.
In terms of the standards?
Yep.
Because I just want to be sure that it's, it looked, it's something similar to that. I mean, obviously, that was a successful grant application, and it, you know, it should match up with that, rather than something that we're just saying, you know, would sound good. I know that you guys know what would, what would be more successful.
Thank you.
Oh, I have one, one last point.
I hope to take my comments as suggestive ways to maximize your chances.
Oh, we do. And when I was talking with a gentleman from the State Allocation Board yesterday, he informed me that everyone who received a passing score in round one was funded, and round two will be more competitive.
Well, we had a motion, Parker, and second by Cordero. Favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nope. It's five zero, passes. Thank you. We're on to E2, public hearing and adoption of Resolution Number 070818 regarding the California Department of Education Arts and Music Block Grant.
This is actually in follow-up to decisions the board made earlier about funding the elementary musical program, in which we now have classroom instruction for every fourth grade student and fifth grade and sixth grade instruction on a voluntary basis in instrumental music. Normally, we would have put this on the consent agenda, but it does call for a public hearing. So I will ask Robin Sowoski to introduce the item, and we do need to have a public hearing on it.
Okay. As you can see from the memo, it's with Senate Bill 77, that provides the art and music ongoing grant. There were two last year. One was a larger one one time, and this is the ongoing one. We'll see how far it's ongoing, but at this point, it's still in place. And in order to spend that money and use it for salaries for additional staff, you have to have the public hearing and the resolution. So included in here is the resolution that we will do in the public hearing in a moment. And then the narrative that is also required is behind, and I included what I was going to be putting in a board brief anyway. So it's a little more than what the state wants, but for you, it has the narrative at the top, and then it has all of the scheduling for not only the fourth grade students, but also the fifth and sixth grade. There's one update on the narrative. I was visiting Open Alternative School today, and Gwen Phillips, the principal there, informed me that fourth grade students not only get instruction in the recorder, but also guitar. So they have enough guitars for every student to have that. So they have, being in an alternative school, they have a little different program. I will, will bring you an update on that violin program in the near future. It's really going well. We've got great pictures and reports from the school, from parents and from the teachers. One thing I wanted to add, the exact amount that this fund is for this year, it's not on your paperwork, is $87,330. So that's the amount of the grant. That covers one teacher's salary with all of the benefits and all that go along with it. That's serving 565 fourth graders. And for your information, too, there are 265th and sixth graders who are continuing with their music instruction that started. So that's the total that you see the schedule on the backside. It's all of those students, I haven't added that together, but it looks like it's about 825 students that are served. Now, some of those are, you know, getting violin, and others are the continuing. And before you ask, Dr. Noel, about supplant and supplement, it says clearly in the resolution that it's for additional staff. So I met with the consultant, I went to a special workshop that was brought to our region, and I asked about that particular thing, because I didn't want to go along this avenue, as we had, you know, been explained last spring, and not have it be the correct way. And she confirmed that because we redesigned our program, we actually cut all of our funding down to a very, you know, minimal amount that could not even fund a teacher, that this was absolutely accepted and it would be fine. So that's all in place. So I guess we need to go forward. Our questions, if you'd like.
Questions, or I need to, can I open the public hearing first?
I'd like to make a motion.
Well, I have to...
We have a speaker?
No, I have to first, because it's a public hearing, I have to open it up to the public.
Oh.
So I open it, and is there any public, any public comments? No, now I close the public hearing. Now I could go ahead and...
Public hearing doesn't close till we vote on it, does it? I think this whole thing is a public hearing. I'm just based on the way the county...
I don't know.
It's important.
What do you think?
We open it, we do the business, we close it.
And then you close it at the end of this item?
At the end of the item?
That would be my understanding.
Okay, it's still open.
That would be fine. It achieves the same thing.
It doesn't matter.
I wanted to get on to...
Go ahead, go, go.
I wanted to move to adopt Resolution Number 07/08-18 with one change.
Yes.
Well, down the last paragraph, it says, "I, J. Brian Sarves, Superintendent of the Governing Board of the Santa Barbara School Districts," and I think that it was supposed to read Secretary Clerk of the Governing Board of the Santa Barbara School Districts.
I'm sure we can change that.
Do I hear a second with the change?
Second.
Noel and Harter, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nope. Passes, five zero. And now I can close the public hearing. E3, approval of resolution, this is a similar, no, this is different, I'm sorry. Approval of Resolution Number 0708-19, authorizing the short-term borrowing of 15 million in funds for fiscal year 0809, and the issuance and sale of 0809 Tax and Revenue Anticipation Notes, or TRANs.
And Eric Smith, our interim Assistant Superintendent for Business, will make the presentation on the sale of Tax and Revenue Anticipation Notes, TRANs.
Thank you, Dr. Sarves.
Isn't that, that's a fun term.
Yes, it is. TRANs, Tax Revenue Anticipation Notes, refer to a short-term cash flow instrument that helps districts manage cash over the course of the year. As you know, school districts are dependent on both state aid and property taxes to fund general purpose, their general purpose revenue over the course of the year. And the fact that state apportionments come, depending on your schedule, usually on a tently basis, but you don't get property taxes until December or April, but you incur expenses from payroll prior to that, leaves you in a cash deficit in portions of the year. So a Tax and Revenue Anticipation Note is a means of short-term borrowing that has to be repaid within the fiscal year, that basically smoothes out those cash deficits. There are other means that are available to school districts in terms of short-term borrowing, but TRANs is the preferred alternative, because we can borrow at tax-exempt rates, and then we can invest in taxable securities. And that difference, often called arbitrage, allows you to basically borrow at less-than-market interest, and then basically invest in market-interest earnings. And then that spread basically accrues interest income to the general fund. And based on a Tax and Revenue Anticipation Note of approximately $15 million, we estimate there would be about $250,000 of interest income generated on that size note. Now, I will mention that at this point, we ask you to basically authorize a not-to-exceed amount. The actual Tax and Revenue Anticipation Note will probably be less than amount, because we have to go through a sizing that looks at, you know, our available resources and cash flow deficits and targets of that nature. And then, but we're asking you for the authority to move ahead with this. The other thing I should point out to you is that because you're in a qualified status, the County Office of Education basically has the ability to basically analyze and basically authorize the TRANs on the basis of your ability to repay the note. So basically, they could preclude you from issuing it, but it's probably not likely, given that they don't want you to lose income. So we have been in contact with the County Office of Education and have provided them with the information, and they'll do their own impartial analysis. But at this point, this is an enabling resolution, and we're asking for your approval. I'd be more than happy to answer any questions.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
Must be the night for typos. There is a typo in here on, on the narrative. If you go down to the last sentence, where it starts with this spread, and you go toward the end of it, where it says interest, there's an extra "the" in there.
Which page are we on?
Yeah, it should just say interest earnings, not interest, the earnings. I just caught that.
I'm sorry, which page is that?
Um, it's...
It, it doesn't really matter.
It's on the memo.
Oh, on the memo.
Yeah, it just bothered me. Everybody was pointing at things out, so I figured I'd point out my own error. So it should say interest earnings, not, and interest earnings.
Should be, on the, interest on the earnings?
Yeah, it should be, it should read this spread between the interest cost to borrow and interest earnings on investment results and increased revenue to the district. Take that extra "the" out.
Okay. Anybody, any other discussion? The motion was Harder, Noel, was that right?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, passes five zero.
This is what happens when you sit down at the table with English majors.
[laughing]
Should go to E4.
E4.
E4 is the fourth reading and adoption of board policy 1240, Volunteer Assistance.
We've seen, yes, we've seen this before.
Yes.
A few times.
We have Elaine Alvarado with us tonight, who is our Classified Personnel Coordinator, to explain the last change, right?
Thank you, Dr. Service and board members. We are bringing this back, it's the fourth reading. I understand from the previous meeting, there were some questions regarding TB testing and payment of testing, and we've clarified that, and we've added that to this board policy. It is underlined in the third paragraph of the policy, and the district, and our past practice and continuing practice has been to pay for TB testing, and that includes all of our volunteers. So we've added that language in, into the board policy, as requested, and for clarification. Mrs. Sowoski has some additional information on TB testing that may have come forward from, from last meeting? No? Okay.
No, actually, I was not present at the last meeting, but this was the information I got, that we needed to be specific about, that district provides the TB test, or will pay for it.
You have any questions on the policy? Yes, go ahead.
My first question is, the agenda item is fourth reading adoption of board policy 1240, Volunteer Assistance, but what we have here is AR 1240.
Correct.
Not the board policy.
Okay.
Did we approve the board policy? Was it just the AR that we were holding off on? I don't remember.
I thought we approved the policy, and we were bringing back the AR.
Was it?
Looks like the memo, then, is incorrect. It should say Administrative Regulation.
However, I do want this to be correct.
Yeah, I actually think we should just pull it, because I'm not sure that we bifurcated it and voted on the policy versus the regs.
I'm not sure either.
And I don't, can anybody call that up out of their memory banks?
No, and I'm sorry, if I had seen this before, I would have, but I just looked at it and realized that says AR.
Okay.
So...
Oh, I think we're all coming back and not had been part of that, that other meeting, and so certainly, we can have that more clear and made more clear on the policy and the AR, so that we're prepared to present this in, in both formats.
Can I make a suggestion that we conduct any discussion tonight, and then maybe we can put it on the consent agenda?
Go ahead. Do you want to say the typo?
Yeah, we all have the same typo. We all saw supervised it in the third paragraph down. Harder's not directly supervised.
Oh.
Okay. My questions on this are, first of all, what funding source do we use to provide TB testing?
Funding source is a general funds, funding source, it's budgeted out of the Personnel Department.
So it's from the general fund. And one thing that I would, I would, if we, if we're going to have that in there, what I would like to add in also, is that it pays for, the districts provide the TB test and follow-up x-rays at no cost to the volunteer, because we have so many parents that would be subjected to follow-up x-rays. But then I'm unclear, and, and this is, you know, I just don't know what we think this would cost, in terms of a hit to the general fund, and if it's more appropriate for Title I parent involvement, if there's any district money that's available for that, instead of general fund. I would like clarification on that.
I, I don't have the figures for the, for the TB testing and the, and the impact that we have on a yearly basis, although it's, it's generally been, generally been covered by, by our budget, and we've never been, had experience anything that was excessive. We do pay for chest x-rays as needed, if that's, if they, if they volunteer test positive or knows that they are going to have a positive test, that we will have the x-ray taken in lieu of the, the testing, obviously.
And then my one other concern is, it's kind of like a who, what is a volunteer, and what, I had Dr. Robertson kindly bring what we have in terms of forms, which are just the live-scan service forms currently. If, if we had some sort of background check, if you want to pass those down to take a look at them, because this doesn't, the form that, that we have doesn't ask a lot of questions, especially about things like if you're at risk for TB, because what I see, especially at the elementary level, are issues with if a parent, if a teacher has a great idea for a last-minute field trip, or a special activity that one time brings parents in, and then parents aren't TB-tested for it ahead of time, then they're not, they're not going to be allowed to come into the classroom, or they're not going to be allowed to go on that field trip. And there is the, the line on the second page of this AR, the Superintendent Designee may exempt from TB testing requirements to those volunteers who serve less than a school year. And obviously, that would, that would actually cover every volunteer in the district, but if there were some form, if there were a background check form that, that a principal could sign off on, if this is a one-time activity, that parents, you know, can, could come in, where they might, it might be okay for them not to be TB-tested, because they're only going to be with students for one hour, once a year, or whatever, then I think that that would be appropriate, but I'm just concerned that as it's written, if there isn't something, some form like that that's available on the school sites, that it would end up being quite onerous on, on schools and on teachers.
Ms. Parker, I would, just to, to comment on that and respond to that, certainly, once we've established the policy and, and our, and our clearing have clear directives on, where we're going with the, the program and the process, I mean, that is, one of our intent is to formalize, if you want, the, our process with volunteers and at the sites, and give clear direction to our principals and, and other administrators as to the qualifications and what we're looking for, and what we're, per the, per the board policy. So I would, I'm looking forward to having that established, so that we can present that and have that available to the, to the principals, so that they are clear, and, and when they are offering and, and are looking for volunteers for last-minute situations, just like you described, and what meets the criteria and who doesn't, that would be something that we want to address, and what the principals are asking as well. Who is a volunteer?
My suggestion would be that in that line, the Superintendent Designee may exempt from TB testing, at, at the end of that line, it would say something like, background check forms for this purpose will be available on school sites, something like that.
Or a questionnaire form of some sort.
Questionnaire.
That'd be great.
Thank you very much. We'll see this again, I guess.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. E5, board action on student expulsion cases, 0708-21 and 0708-30.
In case 0708 dash 21, move to approve the stipulated agreement.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No?
Passes five zero.
In case 0708 dash 30, moved to reject the stipulated agreement, and to direct an administrative hearing panel to be, to hear this, this particular case.
Carter and Noel, all those in favor?
Aye.
It passes five zero. Very good. Okay, we're on to conference agenda, interim, F1, interim report on fiscal services for, from School Services of California.
Well, in October, the School Board approved a contract with School Services of California, and the contract was specifically to provide a fiscal health analysis, comparative analysis, and Fiscal Services Division Efficiency Review. As part of that, the School Services work was also going to provide a multiple-year projection, an independent multiple-year projection. Of course, we have a new governor's budget proposal that bears heavily on that. With us tonight, from School Services of California, we have Sheila Vickers and John Gray, and they will make the presentation. This is an interim presentation. This is not the final report. This is the board's opportunity to hear what they have discovered so far, what they are thinking, and to participate in that.
Thank you, Dr. Service.
Good evening, members of the board, staff, and community. We were asked to do a study of a number of things here, having to do with the financial operation of the district, and we're going to provide for you tonight some of our preliminary findings and where we're headed. First off, I'm going to address the efficiency study that we're doing for the business functions of the district. And what we found initially is that you have a lot of people in that business services area that are working very hard, and they're working harder than they need to, because the systems don't really support what they need to do, and there's also some training that needs to happen. In the area of position control, we always focus on that area quite a bit, because ninety percent of your unrestricted funds are in salaries and benefits, and that is controlled and managed by a good position control system. And the way it should work is that your enrollment projections drive your staffing plan, which drives your budget and your hiring process, which drives payroll, and then payroll should tie back to your staffing plan and to your budget. You have most of these pieces in place, the problem is, you don't have integrated databases here, and so your staff have to work extra hard to make sure all of this ties together and, and balances out. So there's going to be some recommendations that we'll make to help you improve that process and improve oversight of that process as well. Again, that's the lion's share of your budget that's managed by that process. The rest of your budget is managed by the purchasing process, and what we've found is that the process is thorough, but it can take a lot of time, and so we see there's a lot of bypassing of the process. It really isn't up to date. So there is some additional automation that occur, can occur in purchasing rather easily, and we know you've looked at that before, and so we're going to recommend that you move forward with that. And at the same time, it does look like you need to go through a vendor file cleanup process, and a lot of districts find themselves in this spot. If you don't follow very specific protocols on naming vendors and numbering vendors, you end up with duplicates in the database, and so a lot of districts have to periodically go through and clean that out. So we're recommending, as you automate more of your purchasing process, that you also do a part of that vendor, vendor cleanup. Staff training is an area where we believe you really need to put a lot of focus. You need people in business services that can provide some mentoring, provide some training on proper protocols, and also on how to use the systems that you have. You have some functions in your systems that aren't being used properly. Part of the, the reason that you need staff training, or haven't been able to have much staff training, is because as a, two districts operating with a common administration, that requires a lot of people in your business office to do double and sometimes even triple work. You have a set of books for the elementary district, a set of books for the high school district, and then you've got to put them together for reporting purposes. So your staff are very busy behind the scenes, trying to make all of that work, and so it's hard to find time for appropriate training, and especially on processes and, and on the system. The other thing that we would urge you to focus on is this second pair of i's idea. It's, it's what's called an internal audit function. Whether that's all housed in one person, or different people have different parts of it, it's important that you have an internal audit function to make sure that you have the controls in place, because you are fiscally accountable, and that you are ensuring quality control of key transactions and key processes. And we don't see that function taking place on a regular basis, and that, again, has to do with some staff training as well. We do see that you have put in place some processes and some staff, and you've done some shifting to improve the quality of what's coming out of the business office, but people are working very, very hard there, and we just see that the systems and the processes need to be changed to help that. The people are making it happen. What you want to do is make the systems make it happen, so that people can be more efficient and provide more services. One of the biggest things that you're obviously aware of, and that we became aware of, is because of some turnover in, in the leadership of the business office, that's part of why your systems and your processes really are not in good shape, and we urge you to invest in this position, and to recruit a very highly qualified CBO. Because of where you are, and in, in your history right now, and the financial issues that are facing you, it's very critical to have somebody who has experience in a, in a district where they do things well, they know good protocols, they know what good systems should be in place, and they can come here to Santa Barbara and help you get those in place, help provide the mentoring and training for your staff. And when, we do a lot of searches throughout California, and it is very hard to get experienced sitting CBOs to move from the jobs they're at. And we also collect information on compensation packages for CBO positions. And when we look at districts like yours, of the complexity that you are, we're looking at an average salary of about a hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars. Now, that's a mathematical average, and there's a wide range. You've got lower salaries in the Central Valley, where cost of living is lower. You have higher salaries, up to a hundred and eighty, a hundred and ninety, in areas where the cost of living is higher, and where the demand is higher for positions like this. So we just urge you to invest in a very highly qualified CBO, to help lead you through the coming years and the challenges that you're going to be facing. Now, to set the stage for the budget and the multi-year projection part of this, you're aware that the governor came out with a budget proposal that's very devastating to education. Because the state is projected to have a fourteen-point-five billion-dollar deficit at the end of 0809, if the state does nothing, the governor decided he had to do something, and he's fixing it all by the end of 0809, basically in a year and a half. And by doing that, he is making significant cuts to all parts of the state budget. And for education, he is suspending Proposition 98 to the tune of over four billion dollars. Said another way, education is being shorted over four billion dollars next year in his proposal. But other parts of the state budget are also seeing cuts as well. And the way that the governor did this is, he did apply the COLA, the Cost of Living Increase, that is statutorily calculated. It's estimated to be four-point-nine-four percent for next year. He added that to all the programs that should get it, including revenue limits, but then he cut everything across the board. And so for revenue limits, that's most of your unrestricted money, you're looking at a deficit of six-point-nine-nine percent. So he adds in the COLA, deficit's at six-point-nine-nine percent. You end up, the bottom line is, you're going to have a lower revenue limit next year than you do now, to the tune of two-point-four percent, and that's a significant reduction in your discretionary revenues. The other thing that you need to be aware of is, he's also proposed cuts in categorical programs. That also can affect your, the unrestricted side of your general fund budget. When you look at K-three class-size reduction programs, he's cutting the funding for that. That's an unrestricted program, you already contribute to make that program run, you're going to be required to contribute more to keep that program. Special education, he's cutting special education, that means you're going to be contributing more to that. Your supplemental hourly programs, all of those things are going to have an effect on your financial flexibility, and especially on the unrestricted side of your budget. In December, last month, when you saw the first interim report, there were certain assumptions that were made at that time. That was before the governor came out with his proposed, proposed budget for next year. So now, looking at this new picture, it's estimated that over half of all the districts that certified positive in December are going to become at least qualified, and maybe even negative, when they file their second interim reports in... negative when they file their second interim reports in March. So as you deal with this crisis on a local level, you are definitely not alone. This is devastating for most school agencies in California. Again, just to illustrate what a difference a month makes, the green bars are what was assumed in December for the first interim report. And if you look at 2008-'09, the green bar says 4.3%. That was the COLA that was assumed to be given to school districts next year, all school districts in the state. And you can see with the governor's proposal, we're now looking at a 2.4% cut, not a 4.3% increase. So that's a significant cut from what you were expecting to get at first interim. If you look at '07-'08, at first interim, you were assuming a 4.53% COLA, and that was the final calculated COLA for '07-'08. But you need to reduce that by half of 1%. And that's because the governor proposed some mid-year cuts that they are trying to find in leftover, unspent categorical monies at the state level. If they can't, then it will affect school district revenue limits. And so that's why at this point, to be prudent, you have to plan on a reduction in your revenue limit of about one-half of 1%. And my partner, John Gray, will talk about that a little bit more.
Thanks, Sheila. Well, this is a picture of something we call the School Services DART Board. What's important about this document, it's not that we call it the School Services DART Board, but this is the document that outsiders will be looking at when they're evaluating your school district. And when I say outsiders, I'm talking about the County Office of Education, the State of California. It's pretty much agreed on as the standard for using for assumptions in doing multi-year planning. The county offices are on board, management's on board, and even CTA, the California Teachers' Union and the classified unions, use this document in evaluating future years. And this is a document now based on the governor's budget. As Sheila said, with the huge amount of cuts to education, this document is dramatically different than the document that you used at the first interim report. Now, when you look at COLAs up there, now, you've got to remember what COLA is for. COLA isn't for adding new programs and doing things above and beyond what you're doing. COLA is to maintain the status quo of what you're doing. It's based on the implicit price deflator, the cost of a governmental organization to keep its doors open. And so when you don't get a COLA, it doesn't mean that you don't get to add anything. It means that the status quo is in jeopardy. And as Sheila said, Santa Barbara is going to have a lot of company this year as far as not having a non-positive multi-year projection. As she indicated, we think over half the school districts in the state are immediately going to become qualified or negative if they take an honest look at their multi-year projections. Because any district that had a balanced budget and certified as positive, didn't have a surplus budget but had a balanced budget, if you just do the simple math, there is no way, except for some miracle, that they're not going to be positive. And so this is a document we used when we did our multi-year projection. You didn't have the benefit of having it at the first interim. And so that's there for your reference. And this is just the second part of that document. It includes COLA estimates, it includes Consumer Price Index estimates, it includes interest rate estimates, it includes charter school rates, and again, it is the industry standard for multi-year projections. And so again, what a difference a month makes, these are the major hits that have dramatically changed your financial outlook. Now, remember, this is just the governor's proposal. This is his opening salvo. There is a long way to go before this budget is finalized. And so when we talk about this, again, we're planning for the worst, we're hoping for the best. And the important thing is, we have to use what is in the governor's proposal because, again, that's what you will be evaluated on by outside agencies. And so the big changes or the big cuts to your budget, again, revenue limit, that's most of your discretionary income that you fund teachers, principals, superintendents, school boards out of. It's your local control money. Again, you're not going to get a COLA. Just to maintain the status quo, you would have been given 4.94% more money than last year, but you're not going to get that, and plus, you're going to get a deficit to that amount. K-3 CSR, even though they call it a categorical, it has an unrestricted resource. And again, that's part of your solvency budget on the unrestricted side. No COLA also, and a 6.5% cut. Ninth grade CSR, you also participate in that. No COLA, you're going to get a cut. Encroaching programs, again, they're being cut also. Now, when we did the encroaching programs, my first inclination was to ding the district about 6.5% for each encroaching program. We worked with staff, staff identified which were the encroaching programs, and we were able to modify that a bit and have a better estimate. And so your encroaching programs are going to encroach more, but not to the level that was originally thought. Other assumptions at the first interim. This district did a smart thing. Joel Montero, you might be familiar with, he's in charge of the Fiscal Crisis Management and Assistance Team. And every time, I see him about once a quarter, and I said, "So, Joel, what's the next district that's going to have some big financial problems?" And his answer is, "I don't know. I never know who it is." Because I don't worry about the districts that have self-certified as qualified or negative. Those are the districts that are taking charge of their financial situation, recognizing they need to do something and are doing something about it. I'm afraid of that district with the positive certification that I don't know about it yet. Because the districts that have gone to the state with their hat in hand asking for money have all been positive the year before they went bankrupt. And so when you did your first interim report, you did it appropriately, in my opinion, on the multi-year projections, projecting in the out year that you might have a salary increase because you're going to have to negotiate that year. And remember, when you projected that third year, you were projecting a funded COLA. And so you included a salary increase in the third year. I did not. I removed it from our projections because based on what we know from the state, the chances of you giving a salary increase that year, I believe, is limited. Another difference is, I'm enforcing your benefits cap in my multi-year projections. I'm assuming that the benefits cap is not going to rise. And that will be a difficult thing to maintain. But that's an assumption I use, and I want you to know it when you look at my numbers. Another thing that's affecting this district, forget the budget crisis, is declining enrollment. And declining enrollment can be devastating. It's almost impossible to lose expenditures as fast as you lose revenues. But in my multi-year projections, I assume that you were going to lose full-time equivalents in teachers over the years to accommodate that declining enrollment. And it provided some savings in the out year, primarily offsetting the step-in column costs that this district incurred and actually having some more savings. And so this is my multi-year projection. In the next slide, I'm going to compare it against the first interim, just so you can see the differences. And so if you look at that first year, '07-'08, this is really close to your first interim numbers. There are some minor differences. We've worked with staff. Your interim superintendent, Assistant Superintendent Smith, has identified some things that have occurred since first interim, and we reconcile them. And so we're pretty close, but not exactly matching. And as you can see, revenues of $93 million, expenditures of $81 million, and so you have this excess over revenues and over expenditures of $12.5 million. And then you have the contributions, which is that negative amount. That's what you're contributing to programs that are not paying for themselves on the restricted side, including special ed, transportation, your contribution to routine restricted maintenance. And so in '07-'08, you actually end up with a surplus. You end up with a small surplus and negotiations are settled. And so now, the projected fund balance is just under $6 million. And your 3% reserve requirement, based on the size of your budget, is approximately $3.8 million. And so the $3.8 million is in that $5.8 million. I just put it down there for reference so that you could see that you're higher than that. Where your problem comes is next year. Because remember, the governor's budget, it does have some implications for this year, which I'll talk about. But the big hit to school districts across the state are what's going to happen in '08- '09. And so when you look at not getting a COLA, you look at a deficit, and you look at declining enrollment, you can see that I have your revenues declining. I have your expenditures increasing. Remember, you have a multi-year agreement with your bargaining units that includes some increases. It is offset by some savings and some loss in staff. But on the natural, your expenditures are going to grow just to maintain the status quo. Again, the reason the state typically gives you a COLA, so you can maintain business as usual. And so as you can see, the revenues over expenditures is far less than it was last year. And then when you apply the other sources and uses contributions, I bring your fund balance down to a negative $320,000. And so in '08-'09, on the natural, absence any intervention by this board, absence any changes in the state budget, this is the mathematical consequence of the numbers that we have today in which to make assumptions. And so the first question people think is, "Well, how much do we need to cut?" Well, you can see your deficit right now, under what might be your worst-case scenario, is about $6 million. But remember, you're required to have a 3% reserve that year. And multi-year problems typically require multi-year solutions. So a district that would cut the entire $6 million, you've got to remember, you've got to balance fiscal solvency with the needs of your constituents, your students. And so taking a multi-year approach on how you would address this absent any changes would be more to look at a range. $6 million would be on your high end, but you want to make at least enough to maintain your 3% reserve, which would be the $3.7 million. And so you'd be looking at around $4 million. And then the problem carries forward into the future year. Now, the thing about multi-year projections you need to remember is tomorrow, we're going to be smarter than we are today. And the next day, we're going to be even smarter because we're going to have better information as time goes on. And this process is going to play out over the next several months. Sheila and I both think that we should be able to have a finalized report to you by the end of February. And we're going to know more then than I know today. There's a special session dealing with '07-'08. Even though they're dealing with '07-'08, it might have '08-'09 implications. We're going to have a better idea on what the legislature's thinking. And so by the time this report's finalized, it might look different than that. And by that time, you're going to have more analysis locally on your budget. What are some of the things that you're going to do in response to that? Because anything you do today to bolster your ending fund balance this year, getting that $5,008 up, is going to help you in future years. And so this is to illustrate the difference between where you were at first interim, and that's the top line. And as you can see, you had a surplus slightly more than I had, but I have more recent information than you had at first interim. And so we're pretty close. In '08-'09, that's where the big difference is. You projected a deficit for next year, but you had enough fund balance in there to maintain your 3% reserve. And then in '09-'10, you have your deficit going up more. Now, you would think on the natural, mine would be way more, but remember, I pulled out your salary increase. I capped benefits. Those are some of the assumptions when you do get your final report. It will be all detailed by line item, exactly what we did. But your problem, your near-term problem, is '08-'09. And that's the concern of your county office. Because remember, a positive certification means you're going to meet your obligations on a multi-year basis. Qualified, you may not meet them in the subsequent two years. And a negative certification is when you don't believe you're going to make your obligations next year. Now, with a negative certification comes some other responsibilities. Your county will become more involved, and it's all art, it's not science, on how they're going to deal with you. And so working with the county office is going to be very crucial at this time. But logically, they're going to require you not only to do a second interim report, but to do a third interim report. And I think that's a very good idea. It's another look at your multi-year impact of what you know today with even better information. And so, and I'm not sure of the date, and maybe Mr. Smith, you know the date, but I believe it's as of the end of May that they do the third interim, unless I'm wrong.
Actually, it's July 1 through April 30. It has to be presented to the board prior to June 1.
Okay. He formerly worked at FICMAT. And so this highlights the differences. Now, what does all this mean? We're at the beginning of a process. As Sheila said, this is the opening salvo. And I mean, you see some massive cuts that not all the experts think are going to come to fruition. Could it get worse? Possibly, it could get worse. Could it get better? Absolutely. Because between now and the end of the road, when we have our final budget, the education advocates will be weighing in, the bargaining unit, CTA is a very powerful force in the state of California, will be weighing in, and the negotiations will begin. Because remember, the last budget crisis, which I don't believe was nearly as severe as this one, the state came up with things to help school districts out. They came up with flexibility, able to access maybe restricted funds, things that ease the pain. And we think that is likely to happen as part of the proposal. And so we have a long way to go. Each month, we're going to know more. By the end of our, conclusion of our project, we will do another multi-year projection based on more recent information. The May revision is another key point. We're going to know what the COLA is, but then again, if it's not funded, what the heck? I mean, it's going to help us maybe in future years when it's restored. And then we'll have the final budget, and who knows when that will be? By law, they have to have it by the end of June 30. I think they've made that deadline four times in the last 30 years. And last year, if you recall, it was in September. And another critical thing are the enrollment trends. I mean, right now, your enrollment projections are very conservative, especially at the high schools. And so watching that, that will also have an impact on the ultimate result. And so that's the result of our presentation, and I'm sorry, it wasn't better news. But with that, do you have any questions?
I would like to understand a little more clearly the, what you envisioned, the need to make budget cuts, to be and when.
Okay. A critical deadline for school districts is March 15. If you are going to have a reduction in force in certificated staff, and actually, Sheila's more of an expert on this than I am, there are some requirements that by March 15 that you notify the certificated personnel. Now, there is a provision in law, if the COLA, or excuse me, the change in per ADA funding on revenue limit is less than 2%, that deadline can be extended between the adoption of the state budget and August 15. But I don't think you can bank on that happening. Because if you look at prior years, if the budget's in September, that window is gone. And so your first look would be at the certificated staffing. And you have to plan for the worst. Before March 15, are you going to have a lot better information than you have today? You will have different information. I'm not, we're not confident that you're going to have more concrete things to base your budget on. So when you look at certificated staffing, I believe you need to plan for the cuts to ensure that you have a 3% reserve in the following year. Whether or not you have to carry out those cuts at the end of the year as the process rolls out, that might be a different story. But I think you need to plan for the worst and hope for the best.
Can I interject something? Both the first interim projection and School Services projection contemplate the reduction of certificated staff as defined in the narrative. So basically, what I'm telling you, an action not to reduce certificated staff commensurate with enrollment decline will actually push these numbers up.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
Reduce it large more.
That's correct. And if you look at the first interim, I think it was like 13 FTEs over two years.
You had some numbers up there, and that was when I asked about how much to cut. Maybe you could go back to that slide and explain it to us.
Okay. Let's look at '08-'09. Remember, these numbers are assuming that staffing is... is, when I say staffing, certificated staffing. I have no, I did not make any assumptions on reducing classified staffing. I just reduced the staffing that's typically generated based on enrollment, based on your enrollment trends, and how you staff, how many staff would you lose. And so, right now, again, with this, with the information we have, we're projecting a negative ending fund balance of about three hundred thousand dollars. Your deficit, which is a big concern, that's your operating imbalance between expenditures and revenues. That means you're spending that much more than you're taking in. If all the cuts are, if you go to the six point one million, and that's your worst scenario, what you're going to have, in my opinion, is sort of a whip saw effect. You will write your budget immediately and turn it the other direction. And you might find yourself in a position where you have cut more and you need to add back program. And so, when I said there's a balance between program and fiscal solvency, that's very important. And so, I think most people who have fixed budgets, they're wearing two hats. One's fiscal solvency, but the other thing is program and serving your constituents. And so, I would think there would be a range. At a minimum, right now, for planning purposes, I would say it would be about four million dollars. That would be to restore the deficit, the three hundred and twenty thousand dollars, and have enough for your three percent reserve. Because, again, if you follow the California economy, it is just sort of a whip saw effect. And districts get caught in doing a whip saw version of budget reductions, and they make huge reductions one year, only just to add back the cuts the following year. And so, my recommendation would be to look at that range, but at a minimum, the four million dollars. That's, that's what I'd recommend.
And current year cuts?
Well, anything you do this year is going to help you out in future years. And there's a lot of things you can do that are, I'm not going to say painless, but you can, you can cut off purchase orders. You can relook at allocations at the sites. You can relook at allocations in department. Any dollar you don't spend this year is going to help bolster that ending fund balance and put you in a better position for the following years. Because remember, in a multi-year projection, any dollar you either add or reduce, it's ongoing, is three dollars in year three. And so, I would say a hard look at this year's budget is warranted to bolster your ending fund balance.
I wondered, Mr. Superintendent, can we get an agenda item so we can discuss a freeze on spending?
Oh.
I don't know. I never have a framework where it's agendaized for discussion. I'd sure like to see it discussed.
As I told you a week ago, I do have it written down. We'll be bringing it back to you, and we'll probably bring it back at our very next meeting, which is two weeks from now.
Sooner the better. And will that be like a plan for, you know, here's, here are the things you can do, and some you can't? I notice a lot, a lot of times, we're approving expenditures that are already made, and so, we would have to kind of get up to date.
I think one of the things that's going to be critical is, remember, this budget year is a little bit different because of the cuts to the categoricals and the interrelationships between the unrestricted general fund. But as a rule, you're going to want to focus your expenditure reductions on the unrestricted side. I mean, cuts and categoricals that in no way help the unrestricted general fund are not going to get you out of this predicament. I have a, I have a saying I'm fond of saying, there's always a premium on unrestricted revenue. And that's the thing you need to be thinking about day and night, because that's going to be really the issue at the forefront of dealing with, you know, the financial difficulties facing the district. I think the other thing I might just say is, is one of the things that, in terms of getting out in front of, you'll hear deficit spending pattern is nomenclature that you often hear in AB 1200 county, you know, offices that use. And one of the issues in a deficit spending pattern is that that's really problematic in a district that doesn't have other internal cash resources to borrow from. And you're basically running out of your general obligation bonds. You don't have authority to issue more. So, in districts that have dire financial situations but have other funds, they can borrow on a temporary basis until they can right the financial ship. That's not the case here, which basically makes the concern a little bit more immediate.
I have a couple of questions. One is on the DART board.
Yes.
Slide seven. The K-12 revenue limit deficit, which is six point nine nine percent for oh eight oh nine, it's actually projected out all the way to 2012.
Right.
Why is that?
Okay. That's a very good question. We probably got that question from 500 CBOs, chief business officials, who forgot about the last deficit. What's important to look at, if you look at oh nine ten, and you see there's a three percent projected COLA, and the deficit remains the same. And so, the net change for oh nine ten for things that get that COLA is going to be three percent, because you don't need, it's not, you're not applying an additional deficit in nine ten of six point nine nine. You're just keeping it the same. And so, you look at the change between years. And so, let's say in nine ten, the budget, the state budget was flushed with money, and they wanted to give us money back from that cut that we had in oh eight oh nine, is they would reduce that deficit. And so, if they changed the deficit to five point nine nine, that would be less than six point nine nine, and so you would add that. Well, it's not an exact add, but it'd be like getting four percent. And so, the fact that it's not changing over that time means that they're not projecting further deficits, but they're not projecting restoration either. And so, in nine ten, if everything holds true, for most of the things that receive a revenue limit COLA, or if the categoricals receive the COLA, you can plan on three percent for that year. And that was in our multi-year, and it was actually in your multi-year for first interim. However, at the time, the COLA was actually projected to be lower. But that's a good question. We get that all the time.
Well, it leads to my second question, which was about, in the past, when the state has had a deflated COLA, does it, has it historically given that money back? And if so, how much of it does it usually give back? Does it ever give the full amount back?
Okay. Very, very good question. There are, there are a lot of school districts that they don't like the cut to the revenue limit, but the one bright thing is, is the way school finance works, is when it's restored, you'll get the money back. When I say get the money back, you'll get the ongoing money back. You never get paid back for the years in which the deficit was. And so, in oh eight oh nine with the six point nine nine, if they restored it to zero, I mean, they got rid of it, that means in nine ten, you'd get the equivalent of about 10 percent, but you'd never get that six point nine nine that you lost for that year. They don't have to pay that back. What a way to run a business, huh?
There is a constitutional requirement for, for Proposition 98 funding to be brought back to the level that it was supposed to be at some point in the future. We just don't know when it's going to be. And it's, as John said, not retroactive when they do it.
Well, I had a question regarding the encroachment into the general fund for categoricals, because at our last meeting, I believe it was our last meeting, it might have been the meeting before that, we were talking about the, our efforts to try to encourage principals to spend all the categorical funds and not have large carryovers. And I'm wondering if, in this case, if we're looking at perhaps in a future year, having deficits or cuts applied to the categoricals, where it would increase the level of encroachment, if having a carryover might not be such a bad thing?
You know, actually, you're kind of, here's the, here's the catch 22 you're in, is that unless you expense your restricted funds, and we have indirect cost rates that are basically applied against it, you're not going to materialize all your indirect cost rate, which is going to, which is basically an effect or reduction to your unrestricted expenditures. And on the flip side, the advantage of keeping some of those categoricals is what I mentioned before, is your cash position. So, you're really in a pickle on this one. But, you know, I don't think we're going to be in a problematic cash position for a while, especially if we get out ahead of this. So, my advice would be to basically expense those categoricals, because right now, if you don't generate the kind of indirect cost rate to reduce your unrestricted expenditures, that's basically lost income on the unrestricted side. And as I said before, there's always a premium on unrestricted income.
May I also say, we also forewarned, I'm sorry, Sheila, just jump in here. We also forewarned our managers at our management meeting when, or Thursday, that they needed to provide those categorical services to students and not simply bank that money. So, if we do give them a message on freezes, expenditure freezes, we need to make it very clear that, that they're not going to freeze all their categorical expenditures as well. So, we'll be very clear about what that is, but we'll have our own discussion first. As I said before, we wanted to wait for this presentation before we come back to you with...
You like how he articulated that as a superintendent, and my rationale was all about the money, so.
It's all about the money, yes. Sheila, I'm sorry.
Oh, I was just going to add that there are some categorical programs that you have to spend in order to keep the revenues. And of course, those are going to be something that you definitely don't want to freeze.
And just one final thought. Your encroaching programs are the ones that we traditionally see in every school district with maybe a minor exception. And so...
Could you enumerate those things, like special education?
Absolutely. You're, that figure is made up, the big numbers in there are special education, special education transportation, routine restricted maintenance, and you have a couple of minor dollar amounts. But that's what we find statewide. In fact, I would say, I don't know if I've been to a district that hasn't had those programs encroaching.
No, I was, it just gets back to the balance that you were talking about in a different context, that if you, if you withhold spending categorical funds, it really means that you're withholding programs from students. And it has absolutely nothing to do with our legal reserve, so.
Do we need to...
I'm sorry. I just wanted to make one last quick comment. And that is just because you started out with something that I thought was really important. You were talking about the exceptional work that our staff is having to do, and in many times, maybe double or triple the work because of the structures that we have in place, or maybe because of the structures we don't have in place. And I didn't want that to get lost in all of this discussion that we've had about sort of some of the dire news that we're getting, that sometimes I think when we hear bad news about our budget, that gets directed at the people who are working in that, in that department. And I really appreciate your pointing out how hard they're working. Thanks.
I just had one more quick question about that. If Ms. Biggers could tell me, what is an integrated database? This was on the second slide, operational areas of focus.
Yeah. In the best of all worlds, what it means is, let's say, in the, in position control, which I talked about on the first slide, what that would mean is your position plan, your staffing plan based upon your enrollment, is put into a database. And you put what's called the places, or the positions, the places where you can put people there. And then, that drives how you build your budget and what's in your budget. And so, your budget is built off of that database. And also, it drives your hiring process and all of the transactions that go through HR. And so, you can only hire people into those places that are put into the database. So, when HR hires somebody, they attach a face to the place, and that's in the database. And then, when it's time for payroll to pay people, payroll uses that database as the employee database to pay directly from. Payroll still has to get time sheets and substitute information and that sort of thing. But then, it's all drawn off of that, that one integrated database, and you just aren't there yet here.
Can I add just a couple of things? I mean, an integrated system where you have position control drive budget development is really the industry standard. I mean, we're not meeting that standard, and it's the most accurate and reliable source of financial information on your budget. And especially if you have the feedback loop you're talking about, or Sheila was referring to with payroll. That, and then the other issue that Mr. Gray referenced, in terms of the online requisitioning, both of those are available through CECC and new modules, but we have nobody over data processing. So, both budget development and the position control modules, as well as the online requisitioning, are accessible to us. And I believe that our licensing requirement avails us of those modules, but we basically have been propping up that function with an outside consultant. And until we get somebody there on a permanent basis, you're not going to make any progress.
To me, that raises another issue that we have to deal with, and I don't know how we're going to deal with it. Because every time we get news like this, we look at cutting positions. And we never want to cut the positions in the classroom. So, we always start to look at the district as much as we can, at the district offices, in order to avoid, or in order to, as we often say, keep the cuts as far away from the kids as possible. And especially in a time like this, where we're looking at some serious fiscal issues that we're going to have to be dealing with, we, I mean, it's almost an asthma to say, well, we have to, we have to add a position. And so, we constantly, I think, end up in this conundrum, where we're, we're caught, we're sort of losing money, or at least expending resources that maybe we wouldn't have to expend if we had another position available to do X, Y, or Z. But at the same time, we're in such a fiscal crisis, we don't feel we can add that position. And I never, I can never see how we resolve that. I guess I'm not alone.
Well, we will bring a plan back to you. In fact, we think that if we have someone inside the system who's hired, that by reducing the money we spend on outside consultant, I frankly don't know at this point where we'd be ahead, and we'd actually see savings in the future, or we'd be behind. But we think that for the most part, it's going to be a wash. However, there will be an overlap period.
Well, and it goes back to when I talked about before, that you need to invest in a highly qualified CBO to help you get the systems in place and the processes in place in order to help you in the long run. I mean, that's going to be a long-term investment for you, and it's going to pay off. You are going to need to invest in some areas while you're cutting in others. And unfortunately, that's, that's something that all districts are dealing with when they're going through a crisis like this.
You weren't charged with examining the prospect of discontinuing our fiscal accountability status, were you?
No, that was not a part of this study. I believe you've had other studies on that.
Well, we have. We've had a Castleberg study that was looking at what the, what the match points were and what things we would have to do.
Whatever happened to that? I haven't heard about that in ages.
I'll have to get an update.
Mr. Smith, to do it?
There are those who have argued that we, instead of doing three reports, we could only do two reports, because we now have to do the, I go back historically. We were told that by combining as a single district financially, we were going to get rid of having to do so much reporting. The net effect of that is that instead of going from two to one, we went from two to three different financial reports, which I would like personally to understand better why we continue to do that, if it's costing us so much energy. And why, you know, and I would like to understand why we don't join the other 22 districts in Santa Barbara County and work with the county office to take over fiscal accountability.
Well, I'll answer part of that question. You're right. It does seem nonsensical that you went from two to three reports, but that's the reality that you find yourself in the state of California currently. If you are in your situation, they require a set of books on elementary.
Situation being?
Basically, two districts with... Basically, two districts with one, right. And unfortunately, that's the reality you find you're in, that you find yourself in. And as Mr. Smith indicated, you have so much more capacity in your current systems in this district that are not being utilized right now, which we will be addressing in our report. And quite frankly, the systems that you have in this district or the capabilities you have in this district exceed your options at the county office, in our opinion currently. And so our initial recommendations, and again, this report's not finalized, is that you use the capacity that currently exists in this district, hire a qualified, competent chief business official to main continuity of leadership to make sure these systems get in place. We think that's the direction that you need to go.
Are you suggesting another position also?
Right now, we're not suggesting any. We think there are some efficiencies that you can get by operating smarter. As Sheila said, a lot of, there's a lot of extra work balancing different things. One of the things without having everything integrated is you have to reconcile all the time. And so there's a lot of tasks that are being performed in this district that in other districts with state-of-the-art systems are automatic, automated, and just happen as part of the system design. And so we think that there's more capacity in the systems available to the district.
And the final report will help us get from A to B to get there.
That's our, that's our plan.
That's our plan, okay.
Can I just clarify something? I just wanted to make sure that everybody knows that having an independent financial system from the county office and fiscal accountability status aren't one and the same. You can still have an independent financial system and not be fiscally accountable.
Right.
Did I misunderstand something? I thought there was another position that was a data person or?
Well, we had talked about two other functions. In fact, you heard two other functions mentioned in this report. First of all, we were just talking about essentially a programmer to work with C E C C. We were talking about position control. Whether that really constitutes another position or part of another position, that's a question. We had talked about an internal auditor. And whether that actually constitutes another position or that can be assigned to someone who's within the system is a question. And those are questions that I have as well. Because at one point, we were thinking of adding positions and asking the board to go ahead and add the positions that we thought we needed.
That's why I'm asking these questions, Dr. Sarvis, I remember. I'd like to see what's coming.
You want to put that slide back up? That's what's coming.
In fact, I might remind you that in the past, we had a FICMAT recommendation to hire an internal auditor. And we were always in the position of not having enough money. And we didn't want to spend the money on that. And I think in the long run, it's been to our detriment that, as to whether that's a function that can be assumed by someone already in the system or whether it's a new person.
You know, something I'd like to say, and John and Sheila, you can chime in. One of the issues here is when you have poor systems and not a high level of training, what happens is that your people work harder, but they're not always necessarily doing 100% of where they could be. And that results in data integrity errors. And those data integrity errors ultimately surface in your financials. And it's not because people weren't doing their job or trying their best, but they're beating their head against the wall because they're dealing with systems that basically don't meet industry standards and haven't been set up to basically achieve those kind of results.
I imagine that results in lower morale as well.
Absolutely. And the other thing that it will ultimately do is that it will increase the demand for more bodies because what's happening is that, you know, it's like sending a carpenter out with, you know, bad tools, you know, or whatever, so.
I think we've been, we've seen the effects of all this for several years, so I think we're well aware of it. Any other last comments? And thank you for coming this evening. We spent a little extra time.
I have questions to ask the superintendent at some point before we move on.
You want to keep going? We have, we're supposed to be only about, we've taken up a lot of your time. Do you want to keep going? Is that what you're asking?
Well, I would just, I'd like to, I'd like to see a schedule. We've heard now we're talking March. This is February. I'd like to see a timeline. We've heard that the more we can cut in mid-year cuts, the better off we're going to be facing a difficult thing next year. So it seems to me that it's a matter of priority. We get busy facing these realities and doing, and girding for the worse.
We'll have an item on the next agenda about measures to protect the budget.
Thank you, Dr. Sarvis.
As I said.
Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you.
We're a bit over, but I see it, the next person is going. Thank you for your patience here. We're up to a request to address the board by Cheryl Kelmar regarding Washington's gifted and talented education program.
Okay, so I got to wake up here. Thank you, and I'll be reading my presentation, so I apologize for that. But it's approximately 10 minutes, so hopefully I won't have to speak fast. I am here today to speak about the GATE program. As you know, originally, GATE was started to serve the 3% of our kids who because of their high IQ could not socially function in a normal classroom. However, what you see today when you observe the GATE families, their kids have doctors, lawyers, dentists, engineers, and many who live in what I would call a mansion on one salary. Also, most of these kids have stay-home moms. Thus, our taxes pay for the wealthiest kids in our community to have a special curriculum, different teachers, a different building, a lot of our resources. Three years ago, I spoke here against the GATE because I observed that at least half of the GATE kids were not gifted. It was after that and asking for information for over a six-month period when I was told about the GATE program by Ms. Sedon, whose son benefited from GATE. And I learned that the Dubin Learning Center had a booming business of preparing Washington's second graders for the GATE test. In fact, the folks at Dubin told me that even the Washington teachers prepared their kids for the GATE test there. And that four to six years ago, an entire Washington second grade got into GATE because Dubin had gotten hold of the exact GATE test used for their evaluation. Yet this district never retested these kids and allowed those families to steal our educational tax dollars for four years afterwards because once a child is GATE, they are always considered GATE. As a result of my speaking out, my son and I sustained extreme defamation by the privileged at Washington. Because at Washington School, you do not speak out against GATE. No serious discussion is allowed. Today, the Dubin Center is still doing GATE preparation business because a number of families are still preparing their second graders for the GATE test, even though the school district requires them to sign a statement that they did not prepare. But why not? This requirement carries no risk, no consequences, and is therefore ignored. I propose that the Dubin Learning Center and the parents who use their services are engaging in illegal activity because they are stealing tax dollars through fraud. Therefore, this district should shut down the Dubin GATE Preparation Service. And parents should be told that if they commit fraud to a government agency, they would have to pay the tax money back to our educational system and face criminal charges. But why do I care? At the age of almost 50, I am almost done with my J D. And before I received my master's in engineering from UCSB and two engineering degrees in engineering, I was a high school dropout. I received a GRE in a CEDA job training course, and the first thing they did was teach us how to take a test. Now, however, I hear from district personnel that even if a family were to take Dubin training, one cannot prepare for the GATE test. While I say this is the biggest misconception I have ever heard and this issue would be interesting to prove through litigation. The district has no research to prove that one cannot prepare for the GATE test. In fact, the district's own data shows that when the GATE tests were changed in '05, the number of kids that passed decreased substantially because kids did not get more stupid, but less prepared. Also, your own PhD speaking at a recent GATE meeting confirmed that a family could prepare for the test because the GATE tests are given on a math scale. Further, there is also a new book called Blink that discusses the inequalities of IQ tests. Further, some mothers argue that because they volunteer so much at Washington, that their kids deserve more. But what this would penalize are single working moms and would add injury to injury in inserting that the privileged should get more privileged because of their privilege to be stay-home moms. To put this issue in a broader perspective, I was disappointed by black leaders who stated during the affirmative action lawsuit against University of Michigan a few years ago that black youth did not need a helping hand at the college level. Because in my opinion, and the minority and poor do need self-help social programs and affirmative action. This is good for our society and economics. Personally, I grew up in Detroit, was raised by a single mother living in subsidized housing, and I am the beneficiary of social programs. Consequently, I am similar to those black leaders because just like they did not think that disadvantaged black kids needed special help at the college level, I'm a white woman who does not think that wealthy white kids need special help in elementary school at our taxpayers' expense. In fact, with the poverty that exists in the United States and with the gap between the rich and poor never being greater than the 1920s, this use of our tax dollars to provide special treatment for wealthy white kids is a social justice issue. Another element of this issue is military recruitment. Because my son will be targeted more for military service because he is a male of a single mother. Therefore, class warfare, class classifications are even more important because the Iraq war is being fought by our young, poor people. And these classifications are being used by military recruitment. Another level of the GATE program at Washington Schools is a practice of averaging GATE scores, which don't require No Child Left Behind curriculum, with non-GATE scores in order to prove that Washington satisfies the requirements of No Child Left Behind. Excuse me. Thus, this misleading reporting leads to people like me who paid an extra $100,000 for their Mesa house because of the assertion that Washington was the best school in the district. I propose, however, that the non-GATE score is below 800. And after moving from Scotts Valley in Northern California, I feel that my son has been held back a year, held back a year by going to Washington School. In Scotts Valley, GATE is treated in an after-school program and all the educational money is spent equally on the kids. You know, some of us are very concerned about the direction our country is going. At a time when the middle class seemed to be paying all the bills, while the executives of Countrywide just walked away with $700 million as our economy dives, executives of insurance companies receive millions yearly as families can't afford health care. And war profiteers like Halliburton make billions as our country goes into debt by the trillions. And now the proposition to give us middle-class $600 in economic stimulus package is just a joke. How much does one man need? And is living in extreme economic injustice really the kind of life the rich want for their kids? The rich should look strongly at the countries where violence is rampant always before answering the question. Therefore, what we need to do is change our country's consciousness, and this begins with these kids. How are we going to expect future leaders to form win-win trade policies with minority and indigenous people? Or to forfeit a portion of their million-dollar bonus for the good of this country if we raise arrogant children with no sense of fairness or kindness? In my opinion, greed comes from one's lack of inner confidence in knowing that one has value and that one can succeed without an unfair advantage of money and power. Thus, if we continue to raise white kids in isolated environments where the kid whose dad is a producer gets a lead role in the school play, even though the kid can't act, if our kids continue to live the misconception that they are superior, where bigger is better, bigger houses, more stuff, more popular, and where it's not what you know, it's who you know, arrogance and greed will be this country's demise. So I want to thank, and by thanking, Washington mothers who have such enormous financial privilege in helping me to develop a thick skin. Because as I finish my J D., I will continue to speak out in my book called Rags to Middle Class for social issues. And today, I am pleading with this school district to take the substantial measures necessary to take the corruption out of GATE once and for all, and to equally distribute our tax dollars to all of our kids. I do not want to litigate this situation, but I feel like I will have to if things are not corrected. Thank you for the time.
I wonder if we might ask Ms. Kelmar for a copy of your comments? If you'd like to email them to us.
Well, I can do it.
Okay, okay. Yes, if you would prefer to keep that. Their list, they're, we have.
On our website.
On our website, yeah. Thank you.
Or you can give it to the office and they'll distribute it to us.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's take a break. Report on temporary loans to Cafeteria Fund.
I know that we've had some back and forth. We've had memos and other information in the board brief. But I asked Eric Smith to do this in public so that we finalize this issue about the Cafeteria Fund. I'm tired of talking about it. So Eric Smith?
Thank you. As Dr. Sarvis alluded to, I put together a conference item on the temporary loans to the Cafeteria Fund, which kind of gives a historical retrospective with respect to the temporary cash loans from the General Fund to the Cafeteria Fund, which is probably appropriate since I talked about cash borrowing on more than one occasion tonight, both with reference to the trans and also with reference to the fiscal picture or the outlook of the district. The first thing I want to do is talk about permanent inter-fund transfers and as opposed to temporary cash flow loans. And I think that distinction is an important one because if you look through the historical documentation, you can see that we've done both. But before I do that, I think I really need to talk about the modified accrual basis of accounting, which is the type of accounting methodology that we use in school districts. And as laid out in the item, the modified accrual basis of accounting means that we basically recognize income when we know it's coming, not when it's actually receded as cash. And similarly, we basically expense or set liabilities up when we know we have to pay something, not when we actually expense the cash. So what that means is that when we're dealing with budgeting issues, we look at things that basically are expenses or liabilities that decrease fund balance or things that are receded or set up as receivables that increase fund balance, even though we haven't receded cash or expensed cash. And that's an important consideration. So one of the things that's important when we look at the modified accrual basis of accounting is that on paper, we can have a positive fund balance, but we have less cash in the bank than what the fund balance shows because we might have receivables out there. The flip side of that is, is that on paper, you know, the fund balance should be decreased, but it's not because we expensed cash. It's because we had to set up a liability to show that sooner or later, that liability or that payable will need to be paid. So in the particular instance of the Cafeteria Fund, the Cafeteria Fund is typically cash poor at year-end because it's highly dependent on receivables from both the state and federal government. So over the course of the last three years, and I only went three years back, we've basically done temporary loans, meaning we've moved cash from the General Fund to the Cafeteria Fund, so basically they could pay their bills. Now, the ed code prescribes that within 120 days that basically those loans, and what we call them due-to, due-froms, are reversed. And then basically what happens is the reversal credits cash in the General Fund. When I looked through the historical documentation, I saw that there was a lot of analysis on this, but there was never any conclusive evidence that basically the loans were reversed until I went to the printouts. And what the printouts show you is basically the financial transaction. And what the printouts show you is basically the financial transactions that show not only when the cash was moved from the General Fund through due-to or due-from, or I might probably get those interchanged, but in any event, and when they were reversed. And I didn't look to see if they were done within the 120 days, I just saw that they were done, because I wanted to put this thing to rest. Now, separately from that issue is that we have made interfund transfers, permanent interfund budget transfers, where basically, we have shown on a budgetary basis that we're going to move money on a permanent basis from the General Fund to the Cafeteria Fund. And in that particular case, it's a permanent transfer where we actually move the cash with no intent of ever having it be sent back. So the distinction between the permanent interfund transfer and a temporary cash loan is significant. The other thing is, is the cash loans, you don't see on the financial transactions unless you look at the general ledger. And you're used to looking at budgets, or what we call the subsidiary. That's where the majority of our focus is. The general ledger is all those 9,000 objects that when you look at the fund balance sheets, you'll see 9110, cash and county treasury, 90 whatever, you know, 9509, accounts payable, current liability, things of that nature. That's where you'll see the due-to, due-froms. Now, if those loans were not reversed, they would have had the artificial, they would have artificially increased fund balance, so it's important that they were reversed. And we basically, we basically, um, I basically solidified or I basically memorialized that those things were done. Then in addition to that, I went back and looked at the interfund transfers, which I talk about on the second page of the, uh, of the agenda item. And you can see that we made a number of interfund transfers, the biggest one being 765,000 in fiscal year '04-'05. We also made interfund transfers of 183,728-065 in fiscal years '05-'06 and '06-'07 respectively. Those are permanent interfund transfers that basically increased the fund balance of the Cafeteria Fund, would have decreased the fund balance of the General Fund, and cash was moved, and those basically form part of the historical record of the districts. Because those would all have been presented and acted on through the un-audited actuals when the board received those documents. So I'm trying to, hopefully, I explained this in a little bit better and tied up a few loose ends, but I'd be more than happy to answer any questions. Once again, I did not verify that the loans were repaid within 120 days, I just wanted to verify that they were basically paid back.
Well, I've been, I've been the one that raised the issue. And I, too, Dr. Sarvis, get tired of hearing about it, but I have not heard until tonight a rational explanation of it. But there's still a few things. I say, well, what do I learn from this? Okay? So if I, if I read from the county office about the, about a loan like this, a temporary loan, and a recommendation to repay it, that it hasn't been repaid, I don't know how to interpret that.
I, I think the one way to interpret it is, look at the... came, and then you would look at it relative to when the, when the loan was reversed. I, I don't know...
And, and the district, that our CBO agreed to write off the temporary loan, and, and...
I, I don't know, because that doesn't...
As a board member, I look and I say, I don't know what that means.
That doesn't seem to square with what the financial records show. And then I think the other thing that's important is, I think, at one point, I think when a permanent interfund transfer, and you guys would have to correct me if this is wrong historically, I think what happened at one point, there was a large interfund transfer, and it might have been the 765,000...
712,000.
And basically, that was portrayed as a loan, and that they were going to pay it back, which further confused things, because what's going on is that's an interfund transfer, and you guys could have put them on a repayment schedule, and they could have interfund transferred back over time, that amount of money, but that confuses the whole issue of temporary cash loans for cash flow...
Somebody's got that one just plain wrong, because the board voted on that, and, and there was a clear distinction. $712,000 was going and no expectation of coming back. $500,000 was, was a loan. And, and, but I, I'm not, I don't want to go back in and... It's just, and I look at the, I dug up a couple of old audits, the '05 audit calls attention to this, says, and describes it as a loan with a, a payment installment plan to, by which we're supposed to get it. And, and then in the '06 audit, it says, you know, that thing's still there, the final disposition of it is unresolved. And I, I, forget the intrinsic meaning of the argument. What do we do as board members when we get this kind of information?
Well, I, I think the issue that I'm unclear on is whether there was some kind of formal arrangement in terms of an interfund transfer that was supposed to be paid back. And that would be, that would be category three, because I haven't seen that in my research. You know, I went back and looked at the stuff the independent auditor did, and then basically, what I thought was inconclusive was the fact that he never articulated where those cash loans were reversed, and I did do that. I, I really can't speak to the fact whether there was any kind of commitment from the Cafeteria Fund to basically repay an interfund transfer, but as far as the county office's comments with respect to temporary cash loans, in my mind, those issues have been resolved.
Could, I, do you think it'd be something that we could do and should do to, to write basically a short note to the county office and to the auditor? That this is, with the analysis, and that this has been resolved? Because in our last audit, it says it's not resolved.
Sure, we can do that.
Because this really sounds like more of a communication error, something that happened, but they simply didn't tell the auditors in the county that it had happened. And nobody had any way of knowing on that side.
My guess is the auditor didn't look anywhere near as deeply as he did.
Well, and I think the other thing, too, is I, I'm, I'm... It's almost grown into like a financial urban legend here. So getting to the bottom of it was pretty messy, so, so, but yeah, we'd be more than happy to do that.
Thank you very much.
I don't know, but I just made that up on the spot, I think I'm going to use that.
I like it. I like it. Thank you. Okay, we're now up to our big item here. Oh, my gosh.
Save the most exciting one for last.
Oh, gosh, and I'm just all over the place here. So our first re, this is very, very long, and we're not going to get through all of this, and it's now... You're looking at me, or not?
You can do it.
What's at the expectations?
Watch the election returns.
Yeah, right. I think that's already been done. But it's 9:35, if we go till 10 o'clock, does that sound like a good amount of time? We get as far as we can? And we stop at that point? Or we go back to our other, our old agenda here? Okay.
I like that idea.
Good.
Just in case you weren't getting any feedback, I want it, I wanted to give you some.
I now hear it from the other end of the table. Okay, so we start with the 3,000 series. I have a few questions, though, before we start. As to how much staff has gone through some of this, or whether they have not, or...
Well, we, we originally had a couple of board members who went through, we had original staff go through this, Mr. Diaz went through the, this, and when Eric Smith came on board, we saw this as a great opportunity, given his tremendous background in this area, in business and non-instructional operations, to have him go through these. So we have been through the CSBA-proposed policies quite a bit.
So did it, did it start as a CSBA document?
It started as a CSBA document, yes.
And it has been winnowed and honed and polished and...
Revised, embellished.
Because I keep coming across things, and I go, do we do this? And I don't know, and I, so I may have to ask that over and over again. But how do we do this? We're just going to start on, I love that somebody put page numbers on here.
Barbara Kehon.
Oh, thank you, Barbara. Thank you.
Well, this is...
Okay, page three.
Well, could we talk about just that we're all okay with getting rid of all the old ones? Is that, does anybody have any problems with that?
Okay, here's the real question. Did anybody read all the old ones?
My favorite one.
No, your cheeks are turning red.
In, in the past, we typically haven't eliminated the old ones until we've adopted, until we're ready to adopt the new ones.
No, no, and I don't want to do that, but I just want to be sure there's nothing, because there, there are some pretty interesting ones, old ones in there.
I actually compared, when I got to something I had a question about, and more often than not, there simply was no old policy addressing that particular issue.
Good, then we can just go on to the new ones.
Okay.
Page one. Should we just, should we do this by parts? Page one, page two, and page three, anything?
Okay, page three.
Yeah.
Second paragraph.
Yeah.
The district's fiscal accountability status. It's just a typo.
Oh, accountability.
Informed about the, okay.
We also, we have a lot of places where it says this, as in the middle of this page, this policy shall be effective April 10, 2002. We can take those things out, can we not?
Well, we replace them with the...
Well, you don't even need anything, it's, when we say it's effective, it's, I mean, when we voted in, it's effective. Correct? This was because probably it was done before 2002, is the CBA.
Well, if you looked under revised, it says revised July 10, 2002.
So they hadn't...
Okay.
So just cross that off.
So just cross out the date, okay, completely, okay.
Could I just jump in here right at the beginning? And this is a CSBA boiler, boilerplate, I think, originally. And in most of our board policies, we do refer to districts as a plural, and this has all singular possessive instead of the plural possessive throughout. And I think it would be good to find and, find and replace on that.
Good idea. Page, let's do the next little section together. Four, five, and...
I have a question on page five.
Okay.
Paragraph nine, near the end, it said, "Board approval is obtained before any hard copy records are destroyed." I have absolutely no recollection of ever approving any hard copy being destroyed.
New policy?
Well, you know, we're, we're supposed to have on file, are we not, a, a schedule for document retention and destruction that makes, that lays it all out for each category of documents? And that clock runs, and goes, and you, and it can be destroyed.
There, there's a records retention manual that most school districts use. I can't remember if it's CASBO or FICMAT publishes it, but it's basically, like you said, there's a, like a tier one, tier two, tier three, some you can destroy whenever, some you can destroy every five years, and some you got to hang on to in perpetuity.
And to destroy outside of that framework is actually like a misdemeanor or something. It's pretty, it's fairly serious.
So I, I think what you might want to do is amend that to say, will be destroyed in accordance with records retention manual. I mean, I can get the exact...
So just split change there.
Can we have some training from a husband on this?
I'm sorry, are we saying that we would change, we would, we wouldn't require board approval, but simply identify that it would be done within existing policy or law?
Exactly. I, I think it's like something we have to adopt.
Our experience, by the way, in this, in my limited experience and time in the district, is that we go way over the timelines, we have all these materials all stacked up for 15 years, and then we decide to go through.
Well, actually, that raised another question. Are we paying for storage anywhere, or is it just being offloaded at school sites, or...
We were using the junior high, and we were using the basement here.
Then you have to pay someone to go through it.
Exactly.
It's, it's a cost, one way or another.
I thought that we hired a storage service.
That was my recollection as well. And then it required retrieval expenses and all that kind of stuff, yeah.
Okay, five, six, seven, eight, nine, anything in there?
No, seven, I just want to point out, the very first sentence, "Adopting a sound budget for each fiscal year," which is aligned with the district's vision, goals, and priorities. And I know we talked about having a further conversation with regard to the board focus goals, but I also think having the, the budget in mind with regard to that whole discussion would be critical.
I, I have a question, and I still can't get this clear, and Mr. Smith, I'm sure you can do it for me. "The district budget shall guide administrative decisions and actions throughout the year." How strong a guidance is that? Because I've heard distinctions like, well, if this is a budgeted item, no problem. If it's not a budgeted item, a problem.
Well, as a matter of fiscal health, yeah, if it was not a budgeted item, it should be a problem, because if you don't stay aligned with your budget, you're going to have problems. I don't know if I'm addressing your question.
Yeah, so you spend within...
Absolutely. You know, one of the issues that we talked about...
That's a very strong word.
Absolutely. We talk about variance. Variance is basically when your expenses exceed your budget, or your revenues exceed your income, which is always better than, than the flip side of it. But that's one of the things we're trying to do, is on an interim basis, show you where the significant variances are, explain them, and basically, you know, have you approve them, if you don't have any objection, because sometimes they're out of our control. But if there are things that, you know, require further scrutiny, you know, that's an opportunity for you to look at those variances. So absolutely.
Well, is this language strong enough, then? Clear enough on that? Because I, I've been in conversations through the years where, where, where reference to the budget as guidelines is seen as very fuzzy and soft, and, oh, yeah, yeah, well, we passed, oh, yeah, we did pass that back there, didn't we? Almost, you know, like, but we, it's not really sort of an ever-present document that you work within. And I, and I think we ought to, I like what you say. Absolutely, maybe it's too strong.
Well, you have "shall." Are you objecting to "guide"?
Well, I, you know, I, I just raised the question if, if, if there's some way to make that clearer, and, uh...
Are you...
Leave a little less wiggle room, I think it would be helpful.
How about...
You see the wiggle room?
Guide, I, I, maybe "guide" is the issue. Would you prefer the district budget shall determine administrative decisions and actions throughout the year?
Yeah, more, yeah?
Maybe?
Yeah.
Direct.
A little too tight, maybe?
Yeah, direct just sounds better.
Most of the time.
Yeah, direct is good.
Except in, in most circumstances.
Well, I think, I think direct is more forceful.
Direct is a nice little, but not too, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else for that eight or nine? How about on page 10, I have something, if we're up to there. In the middle of the page, it talks about at a, for budget hearings, that every resident who has requested to be heard will have the opportunity to speak. And this kind of comes up against our, do we have, I can't remember, but in our guidelines on when the public speaks, that the president or the board has an option of putting people together and having one speaker or something, or, and I guess we just have to know that with the budget, nope, everybody gets to speak. Doesn't say how long.
Where are you reading?
I'm okay with keeping it this way, but we just have to remember that with a budget, everyone has an opportunity, or should we...
I don't think you have a choice, it says ed code.
Yes, that's why I'm, I'm saying, but I'm just, as a reminder, that's all.
But we can still limit the amount of time they have to speak.
Exactly, exactly. But then other things, we can be more flexible.
Okay, page 11 and 12. Anything on...
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
Anything on 13? There's so much here, I just, you know, I'm, I'm assuming that staff does, because I don't know. 15, page 15. For example, "A special account, a separate account for the receipt and distribution of lottery funds."
Yeah, it's segregated by resource, so that happens.
Didn't know that.
Where is that?
Under lottery?
Fifteen.
I was on 15, it's the end, I just didn't know that. So much I don't know. 17. I'm sorry, go on, go back.
She was just commenting on that, does that happen? It does.
We don't have a process for the board to set priorities for the use of lottery funds. I've never seen a budget officer come in and say, well, we expect to get so much in lottery funds, how would you like to spend them? I've never seen a budget officer come in and say, "Well, we expect to get so much in lottery funds, how would you like to spend them?" And I think that would be a very useful thing to do. To have, and to have a, have a policy on that.
Anyone else want to comment on that, or?
Well, it's sort of addressed in the above paragraph. The board encourages staff and community members to participate in determining how lottery funds will be used. Just the, the immediate prior paragraph to that one that we were just talking about.
We don't do the second, what the second paragraph says, do we?
Well, we always see how lottery funds are being spent when we see the budget, but the problem is, we're always seeing a budget that is so impacted, that, that there's, there's really no discretion that's exercised. It's nice to know that the discretion's available, and that we could object to a staff allocation of lottery funds, but in the real world...
It's institutionalized.
Yeah.
It's institutionalized, and it forms a part of the base of the budget. So, you know, as board member Harder said, you have very little discretion, because it's already supporting ongoing functions. And so you might have a small uptick in lottery revenues, that you might have some discretion over, but most of it's already institutionalized into the base budget.
That, some history for those who don't remember. There was a time we paid $200,000 in rent out of lottery funds, and we paid several times, seven to eight or $9,000 in gardening services out of lottery funds. And that's what got me awake, that reading what the, reading the law and what it's for, I found that troublesome. And, and I, so, so that inspires me to want to see something in here where there's some accountability and, and some planning.
You know, I think one of the things it could address that is the presentation of how lottery funds are gonna be expensed. I'm just saying, you're gonna have very little latitude in terms of prioritizing, as long as they meet the criteria, you know, and they're, they don't, you know, fall outs, you know, fall within those prohibitions. What I'm saying is, if they're being used to fund librarians or whatever, it's not like, oh, you're gonna pull that out and move it over to fund counselors or something like that, you know, even though it might, those both might meet the intent.
It would just be moving, moving things around. It's not really...
But I, I think, I think we could address your concerns through the presentation of, you know, in the budget process of how they were going to be expanded. Because you're really looking at more the audit trail and the accountability than you are looking at really a prioritization, because as long as it's permissible.
Well, if anybody's gonna spend them on rent again, it'd be nice to get it before they spend it.
Exactly.
Okay, we could, number, page 17, anything? Page 19.
I have, although I couldn't, I had a question about number three. This is saying, and, and I read it several times, because I wanted to make sure I was understanding it, and I'm still not sure I did, that we can charge fees and I, we, to cover the expenses of students' participation in a field trip or excursion to another state, the district, et cetera, et cetera, as long as no student is prohibited from making the field trip due to a lack of funds. So, does that mean we can charge the fee, but if a student cannot pay it, then we cover the cost of the fee?
Or fundraise for it.
Or fundraise for it somehow.
I mean, that's what happens on the site level, of, you know, the Madrigals are going to Scotland or something like that. The students are fundraising, some parents may be paying for their own students, but it's, it's okay to have that, but if students can't do it, then there needs to be some money for, for students that have been able to pay the fee themselves.
Okay, so, so in some instances, it's possible for students who can pay to be paying for the kids who can't pay? Okay.
The difficulty, the difficulty actually comes up, because I highlighted this one too, is when there is a, an extracurricular trip, a, what should not be a school-sponsored trip. I'm thinking particularly of junior high eighth grade, you know, eighth grade trips to Washington DC that are not school-sponsored. And yet, a teacher is organizing it, using a private company, you know, and they're using school time, school facilities...
It better not be.
To organize the trip. Now, I realize that, that word has gone out, that that can't happen in the future.
And that comes up later, I think, in these...
But I think that it's not, I have no objection to the wording here, it's simply that things need to be clearly communicated to sites.
Right. I was, that was exactly my question. I was wondering, is this, is this particular part of the policy being followed? Yes, yes?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
I actually wrote on here that this was interesting. Anything on 20 or 21? I don't even remember that. Um, 22 or 23? Twenty, I'm going, I'll keep going if there was...
Other than naming every single page, why not just wait for board members to call out their next, their next question?
One.
See, that's what...
Can I go back to one?
Nancy, you want to take, Ms. Harder, do you want to take that back?
No, I, I don't know where else to put it. The idea of an audit committee, and, and I, and I know that we can't decide that right now, but that's something that I, I've read about, a number of districts have. And I think in light of our recent experience, it's something we ought to consider. Yeah, it, on page one, in the very last paragraph, it might fit.
As opposed to a budget committee, which is something different?
Absolutely.
Are there any...
What is your vision of an audit committee?
Well, I, I, I didn't bring it, but Oakland has a nice description of one on their website, and I know I've talked with Mr. Smith about it. Could you explain an audit committee?
Yeah, usually an audit committee is, is, includes a couple of board members and a couple of community members. It's a superintendent's committee with, and then usually staff and the independent auditor. And really, their roles are to basically work with the auditor to ensure that proper internal controls are in place, and basically to look at audit functions as opposed to, it's more retro or reflective as opposed to prospective like budgeting. So the issues you might look at is, one, if we had an audit committee in place right now, they would have probably helped with writing the criteria to select the auditor in terms of the RFP, been engaged in maybe an interview process, meeting with the audit auditor and audit committee, you know, on a quarterly basis or so, reviewing all the financial documents of the district, including, you know, the budget, the interim reports, the unaudited actuals, any other significant financial transactions, to make sure that those were basically, you know, executed in accordance with both board policy, rules, regulations, law, et cetera.
Does Oakland, for example, do they have a separate board policy for this, or is it something that's tucked in? I mean, I think I'd like to see what other districts are doing in terms of policy.
Yeah, I don't know the framework. How you set one up?
I, I had, I, I should shut my mouth. I had one, Berkeley, and basically there are policies.
So that, that could be something that we could look at separately and add into this.
Right, it's basically something that would probably require, you know, some extensive review, because, you know, every audit committee is unique to the particular characteristics of the district and the things that you really want to look at. I mean, obviously, there's commonalities, but there's also specifics that are unique to each district.
Did you say there's a, like, a, a professional, a CPA-type person on there?
Actually, the CPA is a resource person, just like the business office staff is. So the CPA or your independent auditor...
But it's independent, that's a, that's not someone from within the district.
Yeah, usually what you see is on audit committees, is usually the community members usually will be CPAs, and then you will bring in the district's own independent auditor from time to time to deal with specific issues or answer questions. And then you also have business office staff there as resource people.
Let me ask you, if you, if we had had an audit committee in place for the last two or three years, do you think it might have made a difference on our recent financial or fiscal history?
Well, I mean, I think some of the issues you're talking about with respect to maybe paying leases with lottery, things like that could have surfaced, things relative to, you know, the budgetary issues, I, I think there's a number of, number of issues at play. One is you've got, I think, some systems failures that contributed to it. I think you also have, you know, you have variables that impact any school district's budget, you know, the cumulative impact of multi-year salary agreements, if you enter into those, declining enrollment. I mean, you can't point to one variable. There's a, you know, an amalgamation of variables that basically lead to those types of circumstances. But, you know, obviously, with respect to internal controls and probably some of the data integrity issues, that probably would have been ferreted out.
We're pretty off-topic here, so we're gonna have to come back and talk about, no, it's very interesting, so we'll come back and talk about an audit. We'll, it'll be separate from this. It sounds like it's something separate anyways.
Okay, I'm gonna, if you'll help me remember, on future agenda items, I'd like to ask.
Okay, okay, we got, we got a few here. Can we go back to page 25?
Page 32, 35.
Oh, I was at 46.
Oh, well, wait a second, because I have something on page 30, if no one wants, if you guys are that high up. It says, in the middle, near the bottom of the page, on page 30, "All gifts are, go to the district rather than to a particular school." And that isn't really been our policy, in that we, beginning, looking at the, the, yeah, the check we just got, the...
Well, it says, "Donors are encouraged to donate all gifts of the district rather than to a particular school." It doesn't prohibit it.
And yet, we have never really encour, I mean, we even separate out by school.
It says, in the next sentence, "Or the designated discretion, a gift may be used at a particular school."
It's just, we haven't really encouraged that. I just, I'm not sure that we should or we shouldn't, whether we just want to take this out.
Well, I actually was under the impression that we actually do encourage people to, to donate to the district or district-wide, but obviously, there are lots of people who prefer to donate to an individual school, and we certainly don't discourage them from making that donation. But I, I actually would like to leave that in there, because I think when possible, we, we do try to do that.
Okay, page 36.
Oops, I have something on page 35.
Okay.
If I can just, there's a lot of Enviro, Enviro stuff in here, and I just note that, that's all. It's probably a big change from the last ones, and...
Under preferred products?
Yeah, it goes throughout the section, but they sound like great goals, that's all. Page 36.
Can I...
Sorry? It's what you do now, okay.
Can I bring something to the board's attention? On page 33, if you look at the last two paragraphs, where it talks items of more than 10,000 but less than 69,000, that 69,000 figure is basically adjusted by inflation each year, so it's a moving target. So I would just propose that you put something like, less than, than the maximum competitive bid limit.
Okay.
And, and maybe we can put a current as of the date of board adoption, so that we have some idea of what that is.
Yeah, right now, I believe it's 72,000 as opposed to 69,000. It changes every year, so...
Excuse me, Eric, would you want to put in something that reflects that that comes annually from the Office of the State Superintendent, the adjustment, and just, and that it...
I was gonna...
Based on that memorandum, it increases?
Well, I was wondering if we could just add a, a little footnote that just explains that. But if we want to put it in the actual text, that's okay.
Yeah, my concern is if you put a number like 69,000, 69,000, it's already obsolete. So if you put...
Yeah.
10,000 but less than the maximum competitive bid limit, which is, which changes every year.
As determined by the...
By the superintendent of public instruction.
Okay.
So Harder, did you have something?
Yeah, I just want to note that it's 1001, but on page 36, under, it's item 5G, it says, "Orders for telephone service changes costing less than $300." And I have no idea whether that's a realistic figure or not. When you look at the old board policy that was last examined in 1987, and the figure's exactly the same.
Change it to 500.
It's, I mean, it's fine with me. I just didn't know, have those kinds of costs actually gone down in the past 20 years? I don't know.
Can we, maybe, is there anything else between here and page 49, and we'll stop on page 49?
Nice, well... Page 50 has duplicates. 50 and 51 are the same.
Madam, I thought we had agreed to stop at 10 o'clock.
Yeah, no, I, I thought we were all, we were just about to. I was just trying to stop at a round number, page 50 here.
Oh.
I have a small thing on page 45 to cross off in the middle, effective July 1st, 2007.
And I had a question for page 46, so maybe we should just stop.
Okay, we stopped on page 45, then. Okay. Yeah, it's a $500. What a start. Okay, we need to return to the consent agenda item, which was G3, was it?
One quick note. May we each mark the pages from item F4 and F5 with our names before we turn our binders back in?
Yeah.
So that these sheets are not reproduced, that we get back our same collection of papers.
Yeah, that would be wonderful. Dr. Noel, I think you pulled D3.
Yeah, I just want to vote separately on that.
Move to approve.
Second.
Harder and, who was, I'm sorry.
Cordero.
Cordero. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
So vote is for one, with Dr. Noel voting no. Okay. Coming events.
Did you want to go to the next agenda item?
That was it. That's it, we're up to coming events.
Oh, I see, we skipped over F5.
Yeah, we, we really, oh, yeah, we skipped over everything here. Okay, any coming events? No. Okay, board correspondence. No. Board comments. No. Future agenda items, we had a couple. Any more?
I would like the idea of an audits committee.
Yep.
Or more generally, an oversight and audit committee on the agenda we talked about.
Okay, anything else? We have our next meeting on, in two weeks, we get a...
I'm sorry, can I ask a quick question?
Yeah.
Are we also having a discussion of the, of the potential development of a budget committee? Because we have had that on the table for a while, and I don't... I would like us, oh, I'm sorry.
No, I, I don't, I don't want to get into a debate now. Why don't we throw both on?
Right, right.
Yes.
How's that?
Okay, so we'll see each other again in two weeks. Meeting adjourned.